Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Massengo. It is 2:00 PM. At this time, City Council convenes in chambers in work session regarding the following items. We will hear and discuss presentations regarding the fiscal year 2324 operating budget and capital program and discuss all funds of the city, including but not limited to our general fund, debt service fund, et cetera, et cetera, all set forth in Agenda Item 1.1. I do anticipate that we will try to get as much done as we can this evening, maybe going past the 5:00 hour. I've asked council if they need a break to let us know. You may see some of us stand up or move around if we start getting long in the presentation or need a leg stretch. Much looking forward to the presentation, and at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, I think you meant a very long but riveting presentation today that will keep us all awake, at least to some extent. So, council, thank you. Glad you are all here. You should each have available to you the three-ring binders and then also the summary presentations that came out late yesterday. We have printed and put at your seats a paper copy of the Part 1 presentation. So with that, if we could switch our inputs, we'll go ahead and jump right in, get going. Ms. Brock, of course, is going to help us by running the presentation today. As we start and as we try to do each year, council, the work that you're going to see today is work that really began back in February. And of course, that escalates as we go through the spring into the early summer and culminated late yesterday. So to Blue and to Cheryl and to all the FPNA crew, we really thank you for your efforts in getting us finished there at the end. And to everybody in the audience, they have all been involved at least once, if not multiple times, as we've worked our way through this. So with that, Cheryl, if you would take us to the next one. Let's start by going over the fiscal year 2023 review. Just a quick reminder, this one's easy. You see that we had a budget for our current year, $1.03 billion. We think the expenses are tracking actually below budget for the year, which is good. It's also typical. Your senior staff does a great job of managing those budgets. The takeaway from this is to remember the $1.03 as your current budget. Cheryl? General fund for the current year came in at $275.8, so just under $276 billion. Top part of that slide represents the budgeted revenues. And of course, the bottom part of the slide represents then those budgeted expenses. Can see the two prior years there as well. And council, I know you all have seen these before, some of you many times, so I'll move quickly, but please stop me with any questions should you have those. Cheryl? Going next is we look at the property tax rate that we have in our current budget year. City was able to adopt the no new revenue rate, which dropped our overall tax rate by 4.65 pennies. And if you go down to the middle of the table there, current tax rate is 47.6762 cents. Bottom part of that talks a little bit about the sales tax. This is important. The fiscal year 23 collections were budgeted at 90.1 million, which was more than an 11% increase from the prior year, the fiscal year 22. As we look at the fiscal year 23 as we head towards the year end, we're going to come in, we predict, a little better than budget, come in at about 96 million versus the budget of 90. So about 6.6%. That is all good news. Draw your attention to the very last bullet point there. The sales tax is slowing. It truly is. And if you take out the inflation value that's in there, you'll see that we're just a tick under on a 12-month average. Now, for anybody that's listening, we are not saying sales tax will go under budget. We do not think it will. We think we will have a collection of roughly $6 million over budget. What we are seeing, though, for the last three-month run is we've kind of come down to the line and we're just riding right on top of it. That will play into a little of our discussion for the New Year's budget. So next. Here is one of Mr. Kostelich's very fancy and highly enjoyable slides, lots of wiggly deals. I've been told that is not a medical chart. It somehow represents our sales tax. No. In all seriousness, this is an attempt to work on 12-month rolling averages, also to look at your changes versus inflation and so forth as it goes across. If you look over on the far right, the shaded blue area is fiscal year 2024, and you're seeing on there where you have that 0.29% number come in. So starting to flatten out. Next. Quick reminder on here, for the budget that we currently live in, we had no rate changes for stormwater, wastewater, solid waste collection. We did have some changes to our tipping fee at what we call the West Texas Regional Disposal Facility. That's the big landfill at Abernathy. And we did increase the special waste or the hazardous waste tipping fee. Current year. Next. CPI, inflation, Consumer Price Index, none of that is news. We all see that each and every day as we go about our life, and certainly, the city sees that as we go about our city business. Short version of this. Excuse me. Inflation is still running higher than what the Fed wants it to be. They did do a rate increase in July. We anticipate there will be at least one more coming, and then hopefully, this will start to work its way out of the system. You can see that it's come down a bit, but it's still pretty high. So, next. Unemployment rate. Lubbock's current unemployment rate at 3.4% is a little above where we had been rocking before the COVID pandemic, where we had a number of months that we were able to stay at or below 3.0%. We'll talk some more of some neat numbers, though, that'll back this up here in a little bit. Next. Talk about the city's workforce improvements that we've been able to accomplish over this current year. What you have on here are four prior years and the associated vacancy rate, as well as the total city staffing. To the far right, we are sitting now at a 6.99% vacancy rate, still higher than I would prefer, but that is the lowest vacancy rate we've had in more than seven years. So despite unemployment staying up just a little bit, you're seeing the city's numbers really start coming down. We've got a few details here in a moment that we'll go over, but we're going to continue to work on that and get it down to where it needs to go. Changes in revenue to look at. You talk about the general fund from fiscal year 20 to the proposed fiscal year 24. You see the change there, 233 million to 281. That's a 2.7% change per year. So our increase in what it's costing us to run the business of the city is less than the annual increase due to inflation. On the right, you see the sources. You see where we accumulate the dollars to come up with the general fund funding and can carry those across from fiscal year 20 over to fiscal year 24. Next. Expenses, same thing, 214 million up to the 286.7. This slide and the next couple would draw your attention over to the right. A few of the items that we have to purchase, just as our basic book of business, have had some pretty incredible increases. Solid waste side loaders, our traditional trash truck, were up 107% in five years. If you want to turn that into dollars, a trash truck doesn't cost us $235,000. It's increased by $235,000. Below that, the half-ton pickups, up nearly 60%. Bottom right, 3/4-ton pickups, those have just almost exactly doubled on us in five years. And to the top right, and congratulations on this one, the least increase that we've had has been in fire trucks. And of course, a fire truck's a very expensive unit, so that has been very helpful to us. Next slide. Same information on the left. Move back over to the right. See the increase here. Fuel, when we talked... Yes, sir.
Just a second, Mark. Hold on, I'm sorry. I missed your... I think Mr. McBrayer has his question. If you want to go back a slide.
For purposes of people who might be watching this, and you know my dislike for acronyms, so CAGR, compound annual growth rate?
Compound annual growth rate.
Compound annual growth rate.
Yes, sir. My apologies.
Thank you. All right.
Back over now on Slide 14. See the price increase in our patrol units. Had we had this same information last year, you remember, we actually did a budget amendment to cover the increase in fuel costs? I am pleased to report that from last year to this year, our fuel costs have gone down. They've gone down by about 30%, so significantly. We're still up, but we're not up bad. So that one kind of carried itself back to the middle for us. The bottom right is healthcare. And as we get to the wrap-up part of the budget, we'll talk some more about things that Blue and I see that are facing us in the future. Here's your tip-off. The number one thing that we see facing us is the continued growth in the cost of healthcare, and that's the cost of healthcare borne by the city. So it is quite, quite expensive. And the fun one, now that we have our street bond approved, let's look at some of the changes to our cost of doing business as it relates to streets. So concrete that we put on an arterial street, and this is dollars per square yard, so it's actually an all-in cost of putting that in. In 2020, it was just under $100 a square yard to build a concrete arterial. It's now up to $227 a square yard to do that. To its right is asphalt that we would put on an arterial. It has also doubled from 100 to 200. And then on the bottom is the dollars we spend on street maintenance. And council, you all have been very committed, and we appreciate the additional dollars that go in every year for street maintenance. One of our big challenges is those dollars are being chewed up by inflation. So asphalt from $60 to $135 over the last five years, also per square yard on that one. Next, we'll start jumping into the new year. Everybody ready?
Sir.
Okay. Let's just jump right in off the top, and we'll talk about property taxes. This catches all of the discussion in the headlines. Note that, just as we did last year, the tax rate is calculated to where the city does get the value of new growth and development, so that maintains. Maintenance and operations are what you'll see often as MNO. A maintenance and operations rate is going to capture 2.75% of the allowable 3.5% increase. We'll show you exactly where those dollars go a few slides from now. Just note that it is entirely consumed by expanded services and inflation. That's just what's going to happen with it. Your interest in sinking, or what you'll hear us later on probably call INS or debt rate, it also has gone up. Note, though, that it is only going up because of the first issuance related to the 2022 street bond. So no change to the INS or to the debt rate other than that. It has also gone up pretty slightly, so we're pleased with that. Not sure where they go as we do the coming year's issuance and so forth, but we're in good shape right now. Down on the bottom, the only real change on that sales tax discussion, we do predict coming in again to end of this year at 96 million, about 6 million over budget. But based on what we see as the trends, we're forecasting next year's sales tax to come in at 97.8, so about a 1.8 million increase over where we predict we end this year. So it's good, and we don't want anyone to say it's not. It's just flat.
Ms. Joy.
Were there any actions by the legislature that will affect the sales tax number?
Likely not significantly, but we're heading into August. And of course, August is a sales tax holiday month for school supplies and so forth, but that's not new. It is already in all of our past performance, and we predict it out the same in the future.
Were there any additional exemptions given in this legislative session?
There were several proposed. I would have to go back and verify that they made it through, and the ones I'm thinking of were very narrow, so...
All right. Thank you, Ms. Joy. May proceed.
Okay. Cheryl, next. Okay. For rates, recall that in the prior year, we didn't change base rates. Your proposed budget for this year, we'd like to start with stormwater and recommend a 60 cent, sorry, 60 cent per month tier-one reduction. So pull that down. And then, of course, that's a prorated decrease, so it carries out to the tier-two, tier-three, et cetera. For wastewater, we do not need a rate change this year, and I will kind of nod to the future of today's discussion and tell you, we can deploy a significant amount of our remaining ARPA capital to put into wastewater, some into water, and we can forestall the need to do that. And our model carries it and supports it well. Water's a bit different. We are to the point that we're going to ask for a 25 cent increase in the base rate and then also an adjustment, and it ranges from 7 cents on the low tiers to 68 cents on the high tiers, and that is cents per thousand, on the volume. If you look at our average cost of water for the last several years, the most common metric is a residential 10,000-gallon customer. In 2018, a 10,000-gallon residential customer for water would pay $68.97. For the last two years, that same customer has paid $69.47, so a 50-cent increase carrying out from 18 to 23. We've carried that as far as we can go. We do need to bring those adjustments in. I didn't highlight it directly. Our chemical cost in the water and wastewater department has gone up over 200%, most of which has occurred in the last three years and blamed on your typical, it's supply chain, it's COVID, whatever it's blamed on, it's over a 200% increase. So we are asking for that. Would also note, this budget is built on a $1 per month increase to the residential solid waste collection, and then that prorates into commercial. The landfill, the large landfill in Abernathy, 25 cents a ton, and that does not affect our homeowners. That doesn't affect our residential customers. That's commercial and other cities coming across our scales. Colici Canyon, or sometimes called Landfill 69, or the old landfill, the one just north of Lubbock, we have not adjusted those rates in about six years. Our neighbor across the street's substantially higher than we are. I think it is time that we adjust that. With all that said, would also highlight a couple of other things. What's going on in solid waste that's got us to the point we have to do this? We've talked about the trucks. We've talked about those things. Council, you were gracious in last year funded the first part of our transfer station project. The second half of that funding is in this year's proposed budget. We've already secured and purchased the land. Ms. Haney and her team have been in Austin, trying to speed up the permitting, so it is coming, but that carries a cost, and we will have to pay that cost upfront. It pays itself back very quickly, but we need to do that. The other is this is now the alternate year where we dig the next large cell at the Abernathy facility. Once that one is dug, basically, the bottom of your pyramid, so to speak, will have been set, and so future years, it all starts to rise up together. But we need to do the one more large below-grade cell. Kind of talk about staff and some changes to staffing. You carry across this, on the left side, you see one human resource assistant director, one code enforcement assistant director, one net new or an additional animal services officer, that's a field officer. We have 18 total that will go to Lubbock Fire Rescue. Chief Ogerson and his team put together a program, the Call Back Overtime Reduction Program, where we're trading overtime dollars for three staffed firefighters to do that. And then, as we talked about last year, Station 20 will soon be upon us, and that opens with the 15 firefighters. This budget pays only nine months of those 15 firefighters, and that's timing between when they come onboard and when the station opens. So the following year, the cost goes up 25%, but that's all worked into the future. Six additional police officers at the police department, four in public health. Those are all grant-funded positions. They don't affect your general fund. An IT administrator dedicated to the police department, insurance. Your two airport items, airport operations agent, airport police officer, those say federal mandate. Federal government has finally pulled the trigger on some programs they warned us about 14 or 15 years ago. We don't have an option but to do that, so we are adding them. Ms. Campbell, Mr. Patel, and their crew. This all works back out through the rates and charges that are for our tenants, but we have to have those two positions. Lubbock Power and Light is an addition of eight. On the right, positions that we've been able to eliminate. The vacant assistant city manager's position in my office has been eliminated. Want to give a lot of credit to Eric, to Bill, to Brooke, to Blue. They have picked that load up. And with that, what I have done is taken a small portion of that vacant salary and allocated it back to their positions effective with the budget and returned the remainder back to the city. The next one, the parks maintenance workers. This is an idea that Mr. Van Gundy came up with. It's pretty neat. So if you recall, last year, you've got two departments that we always struggled to fill the entry positions, parks and streets. So some of those positions were eliminated. Had told all of them, if we can get them full, I would love to go back to the council and beg to put them back, but let's fill them up first. We've been unable to do that in parks. So Colby's proposal is to take the dollars that are represented by the full-time salaries and the benefit load for those seven parks maintenance workers, cut those positions, which also freezes benefits, you don't have that load in the future, and instead, use those dollars to buy part-time hours and work to build kind of two different three-day-a-week crews, a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, a Thursday, Friday, Saturday. The same dollar buys a couple of thousand more hours. We think it's going to be easier to hire on part-time, so if you all will allow us, we want to try that. They're vacant positions anyway, so we're not giving up what we have. We're trying to have new ideas, basically, to fill what we can't fill. So thanks to Colby for putting that together. You see that LPNL, Lubbock Power and Light, has 20 positions that they have cut. There are seven existing meter technicians that are currently in LPNL that we will likely transfer to water wastewater. That's a budget-neutral move to do that. At the point that LPNL finishes the transition into the retail competition, their folks are dedicated strictly to electric. The work they're doing today on behalf of turning on, turning off water meters and things like that is all picked up by Mr. Spears' shop. This is the labor force or part of it that does that work. Net changes. Total net change to your proposed budgets year-over-year of 14. That's 22 in the general fund. Due to the wonders of math, would let you know that of those 22, 24 are public safety. They're police and fire. One for IT, one risk, two at the airport, net negative of 19 through Lubbock Power and Light, and then the seven that transfer over to water and wastewater. Okay?
Mr. Atkinson? Ms. Joy has a question.
When you talked about the parks maintenance workers and putting those dollars into part-time, do any of those part-time employees qualify for benefits?
They do not. These will be your 29-hour employees. That has to carry an average of 30 hours or less over the course of the year.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. McBrayer?
I suppose you've talked with Mr. Van Gundy about that, but is this work someplace else he knows of, or is this just a hoped-for solution? Because I do get a lot of complaints in my district about park maintenance, and I just hope that this is a solution. If we've had a hard time filling the full-time, what is our belief that the part-time will be easier to fill?
Both Colby and I think that they will be easier to fill. Can we spend every one of those hours? I don't know. I really don't. This has been done in other places, maybe not quite to this extent. Colby and I went back and forth, do you take every vacancy? We ultimately said no, because if we get somebody that says, "I want to do that full-time, I want your benefit," yes, yes, please, come in. But we don't have that today. That's not what they're doing. So these jobs would carry a slightly higher hourly rate. Hopefully, that will entice. We're going to try to set it right now at $16. We budget part-time by dollars, not by rates or peoples. That should put us over what's available throughout the city for part-time jobs and working three days to get their hours. I hope they'll come running. If not, just as a quick reminder, let's say we get to this point next year and we haven't, we've used 25% or 50%, whatever it may be, you can convert them back into full-time positions and make a run at that again. And really, your only increased cost would be whatever wage change there was year-over-year, because the dollars are coming out the same. It's not cost-cutting. It's trying to get humans to go out and help us with our work.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
I think it's very innovative, and I think it'll help with retention, not to mention it gives us different pools to work from. So we could work from, I mean, some of the students that recently got trained or college students that are in, you know, considering that type of job, which there's lots of opportunities. So I think it's a very smart and efficient opportunity.
Thank you.
All right. Proceed.
Okay. Next, please. Kind of hit some high points with capital. Council, very pleased to bring to you 13.5 million dollars in cash-funded street maintenance for next year. So remember, this year, you're at 12. We're doing this with two different components. One is another $1 million cash from the general fund. The second is to take $500,000 in cash from Gateway specifically and only for additional street maintenance inside Loop 289. That is made possible by the change to the resolution that this council did a year ago. The cash funding's available to do that. When you see the very end of the budget, you're going to see 13 million, because that's how we fund street maintenance. The $500,000 will be in a Gateway CIP for completely separate accounting, separate reporting, always able to demonstrate to the public that that is where those dollars are going to go. So overall, it's a $1.5 million increase to the maintenance of our streets. I know we've had some questions, what's on the list for the coming year? We've got a linear list. We're converting those to maps, and we'll have those for you.
Mr. Atkinson, Ms. Patterson-Harris has a question.
He just answered it for me.
All right. He's ahead of the game.
For the moment.
All right. Ms. Joy has a question.
On our dirt streets, do we have an updated number of miles that are still either not paved or are they are, if they are in a program to be paved? What do we have left, I guess, is what I want to know in those dirt streets?
We'll bring you that paper tomorrow. Remember that that's two different lists. The list of those that have generally more than one home on them, trying to get to the most homeowners that we can. And then, second, everything that's left. So still have dollars coming forward from prior cash funding, as well as from the CO funding. We're working through those in phases, and we'll just get you that list.
And I guess, question would be, is there any amount of money set aside for paving these other dirt roads in this 13.5 million?
There is not, but the dollars that are keyed up will carry us well through the next year before we need to put net new dollars back on them.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions at this time? All right. You can proceed. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you. Okay. Moving down, just under 92 million capital improvements for next year. 23 projects, 14 of them will be cash-funded. The listing below that, you see your seven segments that are those next steps of the 2022 street bond. You see the two solid waste projects. We mentioned those briefly earlier, the transfer station, the next piece of that funding, and then the new cell construction. And then, and this is cash, not debt, but $428,000 of ARPA, continuing on our playground improvements. We finally almost caught up with the program here, so this will help us do that. Council, later in today's presentation, we have an ARPA-exclusive discussion where every one of those dollars is lined out to go. one of those dollars is lined out to go. Continuing on, we do have 57 vehicles, the majority of which are cash-funded. Once again, those very expensive, large equipment that outlasts the life of a tax note are proposed, there are 11 of those. Two ladder trucks for LFR, five side loaders, a grader and a loader for alley maintenance, one large tractor scraper, that is nearly a $2-million-piece of equipment out at the landfill, and a roll-off truck. Note that the 57 vehicles that we have in for this year for you to look at, that's in addition to the 42 that we pre-purchased back in June, and again, all of those were also all cash-funded items. Side note on that, we continue to struggle to get vehicles that we have bought and ordered. When we get to our fleet discussion in Part II, you will see that the fleet fund does not look good, and part of that's increased cost. The biggest part of that one, we have things like trash trucks that should have come out of the fleet two years ago, that we're just patching together and keeping going. Dom Esperat and his crew are doing a good job of it, but it's hurting. When those get turned loose, when the manufacturers get turned loose and we get caught up, we've not quit buying, we just keep getting our orders canceled. The order we turned in in October, first order of this fiscal year you're in today, was also canceled last week. So that's getting us. It really, really is. Questions on vehicles? Okay, we'll go to the next. Let's talk about investing in our employees. Top of the page there, your current budget is built, your proposed budget is built with a 3% COLA for non-civil service employees, 4% COLA for civil service, so that would be Lubbock Fire Rescue, Lubbock Police Department. Go down to health benefits. Health benefits continue to get more and more expensive. The city allocation, or the part of the cost the city will keep, is going to go up by 10%, and the cost of the employee and retiree allocation is 2%. We're often answered, what does that really mean? When you talk about, here's a 3% or a 4% raise, but 2% is coming out of healthcare, aren't you chewing it up? No, those are percents of two totally different numbers. But for example, with the 2% proposed increase, employee insurance, employee-only insurance goes up by $5.46 for the year. So this is something we will need to come back to every year and really work on. This is your proposal today. Employee Education Assistance Program, council, you funded that for us in the current year. We're asking you to add the same amount of money, again, to it again for the second year, but the second year is a bit of a misnomer, so if we add these dollars back, that will carry us through calendar '24, '25, and '26, which magically coincides with the end of the ARPA dollars. But that will be a million dollars on the table for our employees to use to improve and to better their educational attainment. So that's in there. Next. Few other things. Again, same theme, investing in your workforce. Our CDL Apprentice Program, council, that you approved and also that you paid for with ARPA, that's working. It really is working. Mr. Rahino, myself, Mr. Turpin, some others, went out and had breakfast with the solid waste crew before they headed out last week. And it's fun to say, okay, who in here went through the program? I believe we're up to 26 that have gone through that program. Some of those are people that were not city employees, and they became city employees. We're now able to extend that program to city employees, though, who their next step in their career is to get a CDL license and promote. And so we're making it available for them to do that. When I get into ARPA later, I'm going to ask for dollars to be sure we can continue to do that. It's been great. Your summer field apprentice program that you also approved and paid for with ARPA, there's a theme to all of these. It just wrapped up last Friday. We had 28 students that finished that, and it looks like we're going to hire nine. And for our entry-field-level positions, that's huge. That's just huge. So thanks for letting us do that. We've talked about the full-time to part-time Parks Maintenance. We've mentioned educational assistance, CDL training, some items that I expect to be able to bring forward very soon. As we've worked through this summer field apprentice program, I do a monthly breakfast with field-level employees. We hate, have y'all seen these young people? Have you talked to them? Well, if they're in public works, yeah, more than likely, they actually worked with them. Or if they're in fleet, or facilities, or codes. Had an employee at one of them say, "Yeah, we got to see them, but they came in and looked at our equipment, went to the bathroom, and left." Well, the location is one of our laboratories. It's a field program. They don't spend time in the lab. The lady suggested, why don't you do it for office-type people? Same age group, 17 to 21s, same thing, pay them to go through the seven weeks, see if we can hire some of those. So next summer, we intend to do that. Because this program has been successful, we now have one of our senior people in Human Resources that has been asked to sit on one of our school districts, kind of employment committees or employment councils, to work with those kids. I think we may have opened a door that we've just been missing in the past. I'm real excited about both of those. We are looking at flexible office work schedules. Many of your field crews already have a flexible schedule. We're looking at bringing that to the office. All, of course, subject to the needs of the individual department and how it functions, but this is not working four days and closing the office on Friday. We're looking at more of what they call the 980 Plan, where your offices continue there five days, eight hours a day. But employees would have one day every other week that they were off. They'd still work their 40. They would just do it in nine workdays instead of 10. And probably, the number-one most requested thing, when I go talk to new or to field employees, has always been the way the city does its annual leave accrual. So today, that is a lump-sum accrual that occurs next year. It's always next year. As opposed to sick leave, which accrues on a per-pay-period basis. So this one, I still need to do some more work on. I think we'll have it ready, though, that we can bring it forward and possibly put it into place very early next year. But that's setting up annual leave to accrue in the same manner. This is not a net cost to the city, the hours don't change. It's just you get them piece at a time, instead of next January 1st getting it all at once credited to your account. So that one's been very requested, and I hope it'll help as well.
Mr. Atkinson, Ms. Martinez-Garcia has a question.
Definitely, I think that will help with retention, but I think employees need that time off. We have a lot of employees that work in very stressful environments. In addition, I just wanted to ask, I know that the summer field office apprentice program, I was going to ask if we could do something for other departments, and it sounds like you already are, but we will continue to do the ones for, you know, the folks in the frontline type of work, because I think that's a good, important investment. And you said you hired nine, why not all 26?
Well, I don't have the ability to say, congratulations, you finished, go there. Might get a few more. We wanted the kids, the young people that went through the program, that wanted to come to work for us, to come to work for us. Would we take all 28? Yeah, you bet. We ended up with nine that said, "Yeah, we want you to talk to us about turning this into our job." Human Resources put together a matrix of those nine, as far, they said, "Okay, now you tell us first choice, second choice, third choice." It's amazing, somebody picked one of everything that we offered to them over the course of the summer.
Maybe those part-time positions are something that we can offer, because I think a lot of them still might be doing other type of training or college, so maybe this would be some way to get them going, and they already have the experience.
And maybe there's some between the nine and the 28 that didn't want a full-time job, but would come and work on those part-time hours, absolutely. We had two of those students that really, by the end of June, said, "Okay, I'm done with the program, when do I start?" So I think we got through to some of them, and we'll be better at it again next year.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson, you can proceed.
Okay, now we're to the numbers. Go to page 24. Look at all the fun numbers. Okay, to start, I do want to go to the bottom line first, so the dark blue at the bottom. Total budget. Remember that your current year's budget is $1.03 billion. Your all-in budget next year is $968 million, or a reduction of about $66 million. There's no magic to that. Come up about five lines to Lubbock Power and Light. You remember some of their proposals that they had to get through in the current year? They've done that, and they've done a great job of it. So their overall all-in budget is coming down. So that's why your bottom lines have reduced. Kind of go back up to the top. That first series is your general fund. Current year's general fund is $275.8. Your proposed budget is $286.6, so it's a general fund increase of $10.7 million. You would have to add the numbers up over there in your head, we've done that for you. About $10.1 million is all dedicated to public safety. That is your largest increases that are coming forward in the year. So this is all the funding summary, property taxes, we talked about the changes. Remember, please, council, property tax, the way we have to talk about it really makes no sense. So the proposed increase in the property tax is 2.75%. It's not any of these other numbers now that you're going to see. Property tax year-over-year is a 12.5% revenue increase, that's not rate. It's 12.5% revenue increase. Remember, you get the value of new property that was not on the rolls prior, comes in at 100%. The remainder, you have your appraisal growth, and we've got the slides to detail that here in just a second. You have your appraisal growth multiplied by your rates. Still a 2.75% proposed increase. You see sales tax, again, we've talked about that, year-over-year, it's 8.1%, but when you go projected year-end to new year, it's that 1.8%. One that I think we need to start paying attention to is the fourth line down, your franchise fees. Remember, largely, we don't control franchise fees, with a couple of exceptions, but we largely do not control them, the state of Texas does. The second caveat, or the caveat to that, the second leg of the stool, when you're talking about things like franchise fees paid by Atmos Energy, paid by Lubbock Power and Light, the largest part of your gas bill or your electric bill is the cost of fuel. And the cost of fuel has been down, thus, the franchise fee goes down. That's fine, we work our way through it, but just note that that is your deduction. You see $1.6 million coming off of the franchise fees, that's basically everything other than LPNL. And then you see the City of Lubbock utility franchise fees coming down by $1.8 million. So those are net negative revenues. The last line before, where it says total general fund is excess reserves, this budget counts on just a hair over $5 million coming from your excess reserves. Remember, that's reserve over your policy number, which we've been able to reduce year-over-year. So, bottom line again, current year's budget, $1.03, proposed budget, $968 million. Pretty much all the slides from here on in dig into these. Questions on the totals? Okay, here's the pretty picture version of the funding summary. See it across there, Lubbock Power and Light still is going to be your largest revenue piece for their operations, but you also see that their revenues are down from $348 million to $254 million. So over time, that's going to be a great benefit for our customers. You can see each of the sources on the left, see it on the pie chart on the right. Largest operation that we have is Lubbock Power and Light, followed then by Water and Sewer for revenue purposes, and then it carries out through the rest. So the next slide will take us over, do the same work, but on expenses. So if we look at that, you've got the general fund at the top, you see again the $10.77 million change in the general fund, or increase in the general fund, about $10.6 through public safety. Remember, in this roll-up, public safety is fire, police, public health, animal services, so it all adds up through there. See the enterprise funds, again, you'll see the Lubbock Power and Light reduction towards the bottom on that. You do see an increase in expense at the airport, we talked about adding the two additional personnel, and of course, airport heavy on capital and other things. But again, you're down to the $959.4 million versus the prior $1.03. Next slide does the same thing in a graphical format, just like we did with expenses. So the largest single operation is LPNL, the largest overall is the general fund, and then you see how that breaks down for the rest.
Mr. Atkinson, Ms. Joy has a question.
On your slides, you have the income from LPNL, and then you have the expenses from LPNL for 2024. Assuming that we have the transfer to ERCOT before the end of the year, have you all allowed for those, that change within these numbers? Is that going to require a budget amendment? Where are we on that?
We'll have LPNL here either late today or when we first start tomorrow. They have accounted for the presumed switch-over in here. Ultimately, will you have to have a budget amendment? I would not be surprised that, yes, you do have to have one, it shouldn't be significant.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson.
Questions on expenses? Okay, let's go talk about reserves, then. All right. Start at the top line, the top row, which is your general fund. You see the available cash, 930, 2022. You see the fiscal year, current fiscal year net change. Not all of that $14.4 million of expense to your excess reserves was what you put in the budget. Remember that we've had the opportunity to do some budget amendments, to partner on developer agreements, where we put in 30 cents and we get 70 cents for doing it. You've got another one of those coming up, you have items like that that go in. You see, carrying over fiscal year 23, year-end forecasted reserves, the 18.4. The budget number that we have used to change is down five, ending at 13.3. So you still would have, based on this budget, 13.3 in excess reserves. You also then take whatever we underspend the current budget, and it adds back into Hypoththesize, you're going to end up somewhere around 19, is where we think we're going to come in all done. That's a lot of money. It's a little bit light. I really think probably the best number for us to work towards in the future, we don't need to get there in one year, is about 22. That allows you, as you go through the year, to do your partnerships, to cover unanticipated expenses, but more than anything else, is we've continued to increase street maintenance. That is the first place you go in the following year to fund your street maintenance. So that's my pitch on the general fund. Move down, and you see airport, water, wastewater, carries all the way to the bottom. Council, if you're asked, how much money does the city hold in reserves? It's that $211.4 that's down there, kind of the bottom-left on it. Excess reserves should be either the 68.9 number, or for the new year, for this budget, 63 million. Those are the very bottom row. No excess reserve questions? Let's go back and talk about taxes. One more? Okay. Council, here is your comparable tax rates. These are real numbers, we don't know yet what everybody does for the future, we know what we're proposing, we don't know what the others. But if you take these 15 comparable large cities, you can see the average of the current year is about $56.9 pennies. You see where Lubbock sits in that, Midland Low to the left, Abilene High to the right, and then how everything fits in in-between. Okay, all our fun-now numbers that don't always seem to make sense, and your state-required language. You'll hear this language from here till September the 12th. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $12.544 million, or 12.02%. Of that amount, $3.822 million is tax revenue from new property. million, or 12.02%. Of that amount, 3.822 million is tax revenue from new property. The proposed tax rate is a tax increase. That is correct. And the answer to that is 2.75%. Now, we do the calculations. You do see the language off to the right. These numbers are our numbers. We have done the 50-line worksheet. Ultimately, the appraisal district will give us back the actual numbers. They will be extremely, extremely close. But these are not your exact, these are not the ones you'll ultimately vote on. Current tax rate's not on this page. The current tax rate is your 47.6762 cents. Because of appraisal growth, the calculated no-new revenue rate would be 46.9 cents. That's the first one. What is called the voter approval tax rate is 48.7022. The unused increment, that is where in prior years, like last year, we took none of the 3.5% allowable increment. The legislature did change how we calculate those increments. It's still pretty much going to give you the same answer, but it's a little different than what you saw last year. The unused increment is worth 1.57 pennies, which would mean if we proposed the full 3.5% plus that unused increment, you could go to 50.27 cents without an election. None of that matters. Your proposed rate is 48.3485, which is less than that voter-approved tax rate. It is less than the 3.5. It's 2.75. Values. We started this budget working on a preliminary value basis of 24.7 billion. We ended, in fact, when we left council last week is when we got our certified numbers, 25.8 billion. Fascinating, right underneath it. The over-65 exemption levy of 7.6 million last year rose to 12.3 million this year. You're seeing a lot of effect work its way through the system. Bottom line, with the $25.8 billion value, we again went up by double digits, less than what we did last year, but we went up by 10.7% over the prior year. I don't think you'll see those numbers when we get together next summer. I do not think the increases will look like that. But you've had two years of double-digit appraised value increases. Questions on the taxes?
Mr. McBrayer.
Using the 2.75%, so explain to me again where that comes in on this.
Okay. I'll start, and Blue will bail me out.
Okay, Blue.
You will not.
You're on deck.
You will not see it on here. Remember the difference between cents on the tax rate and percents, which is based on total revenue. If you subtract out the new properties, and you take the change in revenue year-over-year, it's 2.75%. It's about the simplest I can say it.
Would that be 12.544 minus 3.82?
Roughly, yes. Blue did not throw the yellow hanky. We would be glad, actually, we have a board where we've got the math, but that is where it works out. It's a percent of revenue change.
All right. You can continue, Mr. Atkinson. Thank you.
Next. Okay. The 12.544 number should look familiar. That's in that statement from the prior page. When you break out, where does that change go? You see the majority of it goes into your general fund, about 9.2 million. Of that 9.2, 2.8 was from new property, so that was property that didn't pay the tax last year, and about 6.4 million is the appraisal growth. Same ratios apply then to what we call the Economic Development Fund. It only went up by 477,000. So it's a smaller bucket to start with. 145 of that from new property, 331 is your appraisal growth. And on the right, your debt, so the INS rate, 2.8 million. Right at 2 million of that's for existing property or from existing property, and 867 from new property. Let me do one more, and then we'll come back and maybe do some questions. One more, Cheryl. How does this impact the average single-family home? The proposal would be $110.40 for the year on the average single-family home. If you go to the very bottom, underneath those two little drawings, note that the average single-family home increased by $20,000 year-over-year. That is not a number that this council or that the City of Lubbock has any part of doing. That is where you came up with the 10% overall growth in value is from changes exactly like that. So, current year, the city taxes, $911. You can see how we worked, excuse me, through the appraisal growth, and the tax rate decreases. You take that increase in average value, that average home, which went up by $20,000, would pay $1,021 next year, or the $110.40. So I'll stop there for just a moment. Questions on how the tax rate works? Very well. Let's go to the next. Talk a little bit about what we're trying to do here. So again, 2.75% on revenue, that's the tax increase, in pennies, that's 1.44 pennies over that calculated new, no-new revenue rate. So we're going to take that 1.44 cents and propose to buy the equivalent of 3.2 cents' worth of services with it. So on the far right-hand side, we have the additional 1% civil service raise, that 4% versus 3. That's right at $1 million. That's about .41 on your tax rate. That additional $1 million we're able to apply to street maintenance would be .45. Now, these are in cents. These numbers here are in cents. Six additional police officers is 1.2 million, or .55 cents. Three-quarters of the year for your fire station number 20 additional firefighters is 1.3 million, so that's .58. And then we have to move into a new realm with the body-worn camera system for the police department. It's actually the equivalent of 1.1 pennies on the tax rate. So yes, we're asking for 1.44 cents, 2.75% of revenue, and that's what we're able to do with it. Why? Because you still have sales tax and your other sources of revenue. Questions on that? Okay. Jump two slides, and we'll start on debt. Total governmental debt comparison. So these are published numbers from the fiscal year '22 annual financial reports. You see Lubbock kind of sitting in the middle there. 367, 339 versus an average, that's millions, versus an average of 428 for your comparative set. Next slide. This is a slide we started doing a few years ago to show what part of your debt is truly a taxable, tax-supported debt, what part of it is actually fee-supported debt, and how that changes year-over-year. On the top is your tax-supported debt, current year 260, right at 261 million. New number for next year is 302 million. That is the pull-down of the first piece of the street bond. All that is. Bottom part of the page, these are all fee-supported debts. I know everybody caught this last night, but far right where it says percent of total debt, solid waste isn't really 155% of your total debt. That is supposed to be percent increase. The math is correct. The title is incorrect. That is percentage increase. So staying on that theme, solid waste from your 12.3 to your 31.4, the 19 million year-over-year change. We've talked about that. That is your new transfer station, your landfill coming online. Water, wastewater continues to pay down exactly as programmed. It's down by just under 38 million year-over-year. Stormwater down just under 11 million. Airport, 3.7, and then down into the smaller ones. You see Lubbock Power and Light dropping from 726.7 million to 688 million, or a $38 million decline year-over-year. See your internal services change, about a million seven increase. Gateway, and then all other special revenue funds also continue to pay down. You're asked the bottom line. Current year, all-in, the City of Lubbock's total debt, 1.8 billion, down to 1.7 billion. And that's after you've added in for the street bond issuance. Let me go one more, and then we'll do debt questions. So of that tax-backed debt, that $299 million, where'd it go? What'd we do with it? About 2.6% of it is for parks projects from way back. For Lubbock Fire Rescue, about 19.5 million. The single biggest part of that, of course, is going to be your new station. Lubbock Police Department, about 55 million. That is the public safety improvement project. So it's the building across the street. It's the patrol stations. It's the warehouse facility. The cities, city facility debt is about 19% or 56 million. That was the debt taken on two councils ago to do this building. All that is. On the right side, you see about 6 million in Lubbock Fire Rescue and solid waste vehicles. There is a very small piece left in the libraries. There was a miscellaneous public safety assignment from way back, and then you see the 51% that's in your streets. So between those two slides, Mayor, if there's questions, I would take those, or we'll jump into the next one.
Mr. McBrayer.
Sometimes you'll get questions from people if you're comparing the debt of different cities, and then you look over here at the other one where you have the comparative of the tax rates, and you'll see a situation where Abilene is extremely high on its tax rate, but extremely low on its debt. In order to try to answer those questions people have about Lubbock, where they just want to focus on debt, or they want to focus on the tax rate, it's really a balance of those two things. I'm assuming Abilene doesn't carry a lot of debt because they pay a lot just through their taxes, or am I wrong on that? I mean, it just comes out of a budgeted amount every year. Or do you know the answer to that question?
There's more than one answer to that question. There are. For one, Abilene's tax rate's nearly two times what Lubbock's is. Let me maybe do a different example. Using page, go to 36 for me. The other 36. There we go. Let's pick one like Frisco. Okay. So you see that Frisco, for governmental debt, tax-backed debt, you see that Frisco's governmental debt is a little over two times what Lubbock's is. If we go back several more slides, though, what you will see when you look at the tax rates, you see Frisco has a lower tax rate than Lubbock. They debt-fund projects intentionally. Nothing wrong with it. That is their decision. They have built a pretty phenomenal city doing that. But their appraised values, and there's different ways of looking at it, but if you did it on a per capita basis, take the total taxable value of your city divided by your total population, Frisco's number is over 2.25 times what Lubbock's is. So each penny on their tax rate generates more than two times what a penny on a tax rate in Lubbock generates. And that's what you're seeing, is cities balance this to meet their particular circumstance. If you don't drill everything back down into a per capita basis, you really can't. And Blue and I started working on that concept yesterday morning. We didn't get very far, but we're going to keep working on it.
Ms. Joy.
Just looking at your water wastewater debt profile, showing that debt's going down, but we're asking for an increase on the rate side, I think of 25 cents for that. Are we still doing no charge for the first 1,000 gallons?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Okay. So this would be 25 cent increase above the 1,000 gallon.
Be 25 cents on the base.
On the base rate. That's right. Okay.
And then a slight increase, some as little as 7 cents on the additional 1,000 gallons, not counting the first.
And why? Why do we need the increase?
Well, we can't use the pay-down of debt as a corollary for why we need to change the rates. So the debt structure in all of the city's issuances is level debt. You pay basically the same amount each and every year, no matter how far it's declining. It doesn't change. It's like your house payment doesn't go down when you get to year 10 or year 15. You still pay the same. Our debt works just like that. Debt is a fixed cost. Let's call it that. It is a fixed cost in the rate models. The variable cost is the cost of doing business. So again, chemicals up over 200%. Our heavy equipment, we've been very fortunate to be able to give raises, so we have a real cost increase that is covered by that rate. I've been asked in the past, but you've got more people, so you have more meters, more residents, so you have more meters, so you sell more water. Absolutely. But all of your variable cost increases, your volume increases. Your cost to send the readers out to go to the meters increases as the number of meters increase. We've held the line on that for a number of years, and we just can't this year.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Were we not set to have an increase this year as we had set up everything previously?
We had talked about it last year during budget, that we would have to come forward with one this year.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking when we went back, let's go back, what, three years? Three to four years?
That's correct. And you can, when we get to the individual departments and look at the fund models, you can see those where we estimate them.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions at this time? All right. You can proceed, sir.
Okay. Jump up to 39 real quick, Cheryl. Okay. Same information that you've already seen, just presented in a graphical format. So have that. Go to the next. Slide 40 is investment earnings. These are actual earnings. Very proud of Blue and the crew that does this. If you look over on the far right, you see that our yield, still entirely within Public Funds Investment Act, so still a safe field, our yield is ahead of the benchmark yield. So very pleased with that. They've done a great job of keeping that blue line above the yellow line for a lot of years. Very helpful to us. With that, Mayor, we're ready to jump into the departments, if the council is.
Present and ready.
Okay. Let's go to 42. Okay. We're back looking at the general fund again. What you're seeing on this one are the revenues, and you see the change in revenue as it ripples out across your different deals. Again, just on the bottom part of the page, that orange bar in the middle, the franchise fees, with that minus 3.4, that is those two line items we talked about earlier, franchise fees going down. Next. So here's your expenses associated with the general fund. Current year, 275 million, proposed year, 286. You see very flat, slight reduction in public works, slight reduction in other, with the majority of our increase going into public safety. So for your year-over-year change, that's what you will see. Next. Start on the city attorney operating budget. Statistically, there's almost no change. In council, I'll probably quit saying it because it's going to get repetitive, but you have that plus 3% and the associated cost of benefit and TMRS that's going to affect every single budget the same. In police, it'll have plus 4. In fire, it'll have plus 4. But that same comment's going to appear in all these. So for our city attorney's operation, again, compensation increased by the COLA. They were able to decrease some part-time pay. You have your benefits changes, scheduled charges is going to be pretty consistent across all the departments, but all-in, very flat budget, two-point-four, current year, two-point-five, proposed year. City council budget, same comment as it relates to your COLAs or to your wages and your benefits. All-in, this budget is going down from six-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand to five-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand. Slight increase because of junior ambassadors, insurance, telecom, those items, very flat budget. City manager's budget, from one-point-nine million to one-point-eight-two million. So we've decreased compensation and benefits by pulling out the vacant assistant city manager position, but of course, offset by the COLA and the benefits and so forth. Maintenance, operations, all flat. Same scheduled charge increase you'll see in most. City secretary, staff retirement has decreased the compensation and benefits, but you have the offset coming back on. Professional services, this is where your elections for the city are budgeted. So this budget accommodates both the May council election and a potential runoff if it is needed. It does not include a bond election in fiscal year twenty-four, because if you were to call one, it would be in May as well, and I've heard no indication to do that. If you do one after that, of course, it would be fiscal year twenty-five. Ms. Paz has brought this budget down from two-point-one to one-point-eight. Facilities department, slight increase in this one, four-point-nine million to nearly five-point-two million. Staffing changes, supplies and maintenance, chemicals, safety, all that stuff, our elevator contracts. And then one of our increasing contracts in here is, of course, going to be bringing on custodial facilities, or custodial services for the facilities that will open in our next year. So we're adding square footage, the contractors add cost to be able to do that. Finance, three-point-six to three-point-eight, really the same changes that you're going to see in all departments, nothing stands out on this one. Human resources, you're going to see a larger percent change here. Current budget's just a hair over one million, proposed budget, one-point-two. We are putting the assistant HR director position in to do that. One of the rare departments that did get a decrease in their scheduled charges, most of us got a hit in scheduled charges, so that's human resources. Internal audit, benefits, COLA, we are increasing the professional services and training. Mr. Weaver has really built a great department there. Council, last year, you allowed us to fund an intern position, which has been helping them. So you have two dedicated internal audit. We have a phenomenal lady that is doing our process improvement work and the ability to employ the interns. So those costs are catching up, and that's what you're seeing here. Even though it's a big percent change, it's a very small dollar change. Non-departmental budget, the hit to this budget is the increase in the contract that the city pays to the Lubbock Central Appraisal District. Slight decrease because we no longer have the triathlon, remember that was budgeted last year before WTC, World Triathlon Corporation pulled out, but that's the change there. Communications and marketing, as well as your three-one-one center, pretty much the same thing that you're seeing in all the departments across here. Little bit of an increase in the supply budget, the percentage looks very high, it's really only two thousand dollars. Small numbers. Building safety, same numbers. Draw your attention to bullet number two there. Credit card fees are the primary driver. Council, you did give us permission to pursue a way to recover the charges that we're starting to eat as it comes out of the credit card fees. Don't quite have it ready, but you will have it ready certainly before January one. We love being able to do that for our customers, but as that shift continues, the total hit to the budget is just starting to outrun us. Next. Code enforcement, again, we are adding an assistant director position here. Mr. Walker has done this job for a very long time, done a great job of it without an assistant, and I really need to build that depth in that department. Mr. Walker, Mr. Rahino put together a proposal that we can do that and stay budget neutral. So the slight cost increase you see here is not because of that, we just want to draw attention that we did do that. Next. Some fee changes that are proposed. This is a little different way of looking at fee changes than what we did last year, so if y'all like it, let us know. If you want to go back to the old way, we can do that. Starting at the top, the administrative fee, when we have to go out and abate a property, whether it be of grass or weeds or trash, asking to increase that by fifty dollars to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The collection fee on the weed liens, the same change. Contractors for the abatement of junk vehicles, this is where the contractor's able to take that vehicle once it's been struck off as junk, and then they basically buy it from us and sell it. Slight increase there. And then if we have to go do the mowing, now there's a difference between the mowing and the administration and the liens. If they pay, they don't ever get to the liens. If they don't, it goes into the lien status, but we've got to get those fees up. We can't get contractors to do the work for what we're offering to pay. It's just what it is. Environmental health and vector, same thing. One note, it's in your capital outlay item. We need one new ULV, ultra-low volume sprayer. So we have one that's worn out, and we need to bring a new one on. Quick reminder, as it relates to vector, we do get some money from Lubbock County, but of course, we're responsible to go spray all through Lubbock County. For the early part of this year, those folks were working twenty-four-seven to do that. If there's any benefit to plus-one-hundred-degree days, the mosquitoes don't seem to last very long. So there's environmental health. Planning department, very slight change here, one-point-one-one to one-point-one-five million. We have pulled the advertising budgets down in anticipation of several things, one of which is the UDC going into effect. Fewer notices that we'll have to do for planning and zoning, ZBA. Annexations have slowed way down, they'll probably stay slow for a little while. We had one-time computers we bought last year, so that money comes back out, and we move forward. Fee changes on planning. You see the first three there are related to late-hour alcoholic beverage, alcoholic beverage catering, alcoholic beverage cartage fees. We need to take those out, so they would go to zero. We are asking you to add a fee, though. An initial fee for alcohol separation variance request. These are items that we have to take in and process and provide notice, ultimately put on your agenda for consideration. Today, that has no fee for doing that. We're recommending a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee to do that. We are also asking for a fee if that same request is denied and comes back, because then we go through and do all of that all over again. Not always, but often with no changed conditions that are associated with it. So two-hundred-and-fifty for the initial, five-hundred dollars to bring the same request back a second time. All right, libraries. We do have a slight change in the security contract, just a cost-per-hour increase in the security contract at Mahon. The go-to-key library multi-year rent has annual increases built into it. You see that changing the budget as well as the scheduled charges. All-in, four-point-one to four-point-three for your libraries. Library fee changes. The copying fee, these are our coin-op machines, our microfilm machines, we've been at ten cents for quite a while, we need to bump that to fifteen with your permission. Community room rentals have been a flat thirty-five dollars. Hannah's asked to break those down more appropriate to the size of the room and the time that they're going to use the room. And then finally, the lost or damaged book processing fee, thirteen to fourteen dollars. Council, remember in your current budget, we took away all the late fees, all of that. We've made this as easy as we can. These represent either real expenses or real losses that we incur. The museums, pretty much same standard comments, we'll see now through the end of part two. All-in, the change is from one-point-three-seven to one-point-four-one. Is a fee change here, the historic St. Paul's Church in the Rose Garden. Friday, Saturday, Sunday rentals are five-hundred-and-fifty dollars, we're asking to increase those to six-hundred. We are still well below competitive venues that may wish to do that, but our costs have gone up. Parks and Rec, you do see, again, your COLA, et cetera. Let me comment on that second bullet, benefit reductions for transitioning the full-time positions to part-time. Again, we just took same dollar, same dollar and pushed it over to part-time, but that means when we spend those dollars, they don't have a benefit cost that goes with them. So bring that in there. The lawn maintenance and custodial contracts are up just a little bit. We were able to bring capital outlay down, this is minor capital for a one-time purchase last year that we don't need to, again, do this year. All-in, just under a half a million dollar change for Parks and Rec. We look at the fee changes. Obviously, now, at this point, the rental fees for Maxi and Simmons need to be cleaned up, we didn't get all those done earlier. The team fees, this is for softball fees, softball teams, their entry fees. Colby and his staff have put together a program, take the flat three-hundred-and-thirty dollars out and put in a variable between one-fifty and three-seventy-five based on what it is that they're doing and what seasons. Some small increases in the bases, the league rentals, et cetera. We are asking to up the light charge at Burl Hufflin and at McKenzie. See the field rental changes, the tournament rental changes, league rental for the equipment, and then the tournament light charge, and that's just what we have to go through to get a light turned on and get it turned back off. Carrying it on down, we've got the show wagon callback, today is fifty, need to raise that to seventy-five, and then also increases bleachers, electricity, temporary electricity, and per trashcan fees. And remember, we're the ones that go back and pick those trashcans back up when they're done. Next page, the park pavilions, asking for twenty-five dollars for Hodges, Maxi, Trejo, Simmons, Rawlings, and the Lubbock Adult Activity Center, the night and weekend rental fees. We're asking for five dollars, as well as five dollars in the daytime, but they're two different rates. And then you see some changes in our classes. We are upping the Safety City Building sponsorship renewal, that's for two years. That's probably the most significant one on there until you get to the bottom, which is a new sponsorship that would carry for five years for Safety City. How about engineering? So engineering, we are pulling down on compensation and benefits. We're not paying less in compensation and benefits, engineering gets the same everybody else gets. The difference is, we are able to charge more of their efforts to capital projects. So it's down here, it's up in the capital projects. Do have lower fuel cost, again, about thirty percent year-over-year. Maintenance and operations are flat, and the software is up. So all-in, from one-point-one million down to nine-hundred-and-fifty on that one. Some fee changes, land use licenses. The first one, the fee to use a public right-of-way by a public for purposes other than streets. Today, that's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We would like to bring that up to five-hundred dollars, just the sheer part of processing those and making them work. The next one, land abandonment and land closure fees, same thing. The two-hundred-and-fifty dollars today on both of those fees has been in place almost back to recorded history, and we really need to get them up. Okay, solid waste. Same comments for your COLAs, your health, your TMRS. Diesel costs are down, so that is helping us. Maintenance on our vehicles, maintenance on our dumpsters just continues to go up. We do also now pay more for dumpsters per unit than what we paid in the past. Capital outlay, though, is coming down, and that is largely because of lower vehicle debt. You are now starting to reap the benefit of what we've done to work our way out of the old master lease program and so forth. Here are the fee changes that we talked about. Again, twenty-five cents on a tipping fee out at the large landfill at Abernathy, a dollar for Kalachi Canyon on the tipping fee. The hazardous or the special waste is up by forty-eight cents. And then you see how the consumer metered changes. Note, the very bottom one is actually your residential, so it would be seventeen-fifty today, would be eighteen-fifty in the next year. Streets. Streets, really not a lot of stuff to change here, other than we are seeing the benefit of the lower fuel cost. We are also on this one seeing a decrease because we're able to get that tax debt service paid down and paid off. Five-point-eight million to five-point-seven million. Traffic, compensation will show to be down. Again, they still get the same COLAs and benefits. We had a very, very long...
Hold on just a second, Jared, I think we're... There we go.
Where did you go?
I have no idea. We went forward about ten slides. Oh, let's start there.
Start ten slides forward?
You're doing great.
She looks forward to this day all year, Mayor. Mayor and council, let's talk about traffic on page seventy-two. All right, compensation decrease, that's not because they're not getting the COLAs and so forth. We had a very, very long-term city employee retire over the course of the year, so that's what you're seeing there. Maintenance is up, this is also one of the rare IT going down. Again, also some benefit from the debt service associated with getting out of the old master lease program. That process that we began now seven years ago is really starting to pay us off. Animal services, highlight here, of course, is adding the additional animal control officer. We do have some professional services increase for plumbing, pest control, et cetera, including some staff training, and our supplies go up out there as well. All-in with the addition of the new animal services officer, three million, three-point-zero to three-point-four. Couple of proposed fee changes, the euthanasia processing fee, three dollars outside the city limits, probably not talked about much, but if someone chooses to surrender their animal to us for us to do the euthanasia, we will take that from outside the city limits. So certainly glad to offer that service, but that's not a service that's backed by Lubbock taxpayers. So we're asking for a slightly bigger increase there. The rabies specimen shipping fee, again, inside the city, outside the city, that's just, that's not us. That's the cost now, we only have one way now to ship those specimens, and one way only. So we're stuck with the cost. Okay, page seventy-five, Lubbock Fire Rescue. Again, on this one, you've got the four percent proposed COLA for civil service, three percent for non-civil service, fifteen new probationary firefighters, again, for Station Twenty, three additional firefighters, that is the overtime reduction program. Fuel is down, maintenance is going to be... Maintenance is going to be up on a one-time basis because we need to do some work out at the ARFF or ARF Airport Rescue Firefighting, our big training facility at the airport. Tuition fees are up for our EMT testing, then we've got IT, and then we've got capital outlay going up, but we have more new fire engines and fire trucks coming online, or fire trucks and ladder trucks coming online. Fee changes, primarily these will come through your fire marshal's office. On the construction permit fee, emergency response radio systems, these are to have radio, to have buildings in which the radios will work properly for our responders. That's been something that we've not put in there. It's now part of the code. We're asking for that to go up 1 cent per square foot of the area covered with $100 minimum. Stand pipe inspections, we're adding that at $100 per pipe. Reinspection fee, we will refund the extra T that we put in that word, we'll take it out later. Also the 1 cent. Reinspection fee, 1 and 1/2. Operational permit, this is for the occupational load sign and so forth, half a cent. And then industry shift to the large CO systems. Don't completely understand it, and we have all the experts here, but a lot of restaurants and things like that are going to a carbon dioxide system to provide that. In fact, you will now see small tank trucks, little bobtail trucks pulling up quite frequently. If that is let loose in a facility, it carries with it a high risk of asphyxiation. So pretty important. It's working for the industry. We want it to work for the industry, but we want it to be done and be done safely, and we want Alan Martin and his team to be able to do that. So that's what that one is. And guys, if I mess that up... Nope, close enough? Okay, I didn't get the yellow hanky. Good there? Okay, let's go to municipal court.
Do we get to put the judge under oath for this portion?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, it's your pleasure. Please call the witness. For the record, Judge Hernandez and Ms. Campbell were both here like 45 minutes before we started today, so I think they'll stay for the whole time, too. All right, municipal court, not a lot of change here, 2.0 million to 2.14 million. It's mainly the things we've talked about, except that the judge has been a participant in the STAR program with Lubbock County. We were informed late in the budget that the cost for participating in that program was going to increase, so we've added the cost of that increase into his budget. It's a great program and it works, but we got to pay for it. Lubbock Police Department, same as in Lubbock Fire Rescue, 4% civil service COLA, 3% non-civil service COLA. An additional realignment related to the communications center, I'll give you some bullet points here in just a moment. Six new patrol officers and the new IT systems administrator that we looked way back in the first today. The supply decrease is mainly because of, again, that roughly 30% reduction in fuel. It is partly offset, though, because our maintenance is increasing. And again, that's just holding on to older vehicles and trying to get the new ones, and a bunch of these have now showed up. We've just got to get them into service. Also a department where the capital outlay is going down, and again, that's because of paying out those tax notes that were used on the old master lease. Let me go back just a bit to the communications center, give the council a quick catch-up, some changes that have been made, some changes that are coming. One, would note that these changes were the work of, are the result of work done between the chief and the dispatch supervisors and managers. Some good ideas came forward, and a lot of them have already been implemented. One is to try running 10 on a shift, so we've all heard the nine to seven to eight. We've been running now for a couple of weeks on 10 to see how that works. One of the requested additions was a training coordinator, so we have already created that position. We used a vacant position we had so we could do it immediately, and then we'll replace that through the budget process. The city has long had positions that are called call-takers, so this is a position that in the training and in the hierarchy is a step under where a dispatcher is. These have not been used. We've pretty much only brought people in as a dispatcher. We know that getting people out of training and getting them on the floor is really where we need to be. The call-taker position, for those that it's appropriate to use, is a good way to start doing that. So we have, since that's an old position and hasn't been used, we've reclassified it, reactivated it, so there'll be some work on that. Lateral hiring above the minimums, that is something we can do in other departments. It's not historically been done here, so if we get a qualified applicant, we'll be able to do that. Some in-progress items on this, the dispatch supervisors requested to look at 12-hour shifts. That's not something you can put into play immediately, so internally, that is all being worked on, and we'll hear what the results of that may or may not be. We also now know the police comm center does a 90-second rollover. So if someone were to stay on the line and not get serviced at 90 seconds, it rolls to the secondary, which is Lubbock Fire Rescue. The national standards for that rollover are 30 seconds. Up to 2018, 30 seconds is what was used in the Lubbock Comm Center, and it was ultimately changed at the request of comm center management at that time. So that management's no longer there. Police chief and fire chief are working to pick a good time and date to put it back onto that national standard for that rollover. We've got the realignments that we talked about here. Chief has presented kind of some standards in reporting. The standards for anything to do with 911 are called NENA, National Emergency Number Association. We know what their metrics are, so as we get these changes put into play and can measure them, we'll be able to come forward with a lot of them. One of the interesting stats that I have learned as we've gone through this lately, 55% of what have been termed abandoned calls occurred within the first 5 seconds of the ring. They're accidental calls that are coming in. So as we've said before, we can certainly be better, we will be better, and here you now see some things that are in progress or that have done, that we can make that happen.
Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, Mr. Atkinson, so I have a question regarding, so staffing, you know, with, with all of the issues that we have seen in relation to the dispatch center, we had reduced our staffing numbers down to a minimum of seven per shift because of overtime costs. My, my question is, how have we gotten to 10 without increasing overtime concerns when we have not hired any new dispatch with only six new positions going to patrol?
Okay, so how did we, so we were funded at nine, the overtime crept up, they pushed it down to seven, back to eight, and now we're trying it at 10. If I'm answering the right question, how is that cost accounted for? Budgets, all these big budgets are all managed as a whole, so anything that you have as a vacancy is producing money. It's not in the overtime column, but it is available to cover that. It's not going to bust the budget.
So we, we can move forward with 10 to try to improve staffing without them being penalized for overtime costs, is my question?
Yes, that is correct. Good way to say it.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
On non-emergency calls, that goes into the dispatch also, right?
It does.
So are we not answering those calls now?
We are answering those, and after 5:00 PM, we pick up even more because other departments can roll over there.
So I personally had an experience where we made a phone call this weekend, and there wasn't, nobody answered.
We'll be glad to look into that.
Please.
Yeah. Get with you when the meeting's over today.
Okay, and then my next question, you mentioned the 12-hour shifts. Is that something that the staff is okay with? I mean, are they the ones proposing that?
That is something, that is something the staff asked to evaluate. That wasn't from management.
And how will we reduce, I mean, are they going to take some hours less here? How are we going to shift the schedule, is basically what I'm asking.
And that's the answer we don't have. That's what's being worked on right now to see if it will work.
Only because I, I understand it can be, get very stressful, they're in a dungeon-type, that's, you know, just kind of what I recall. It's kind of dark in there, and I know it gets uncomfortable for them, so I just want to make sure that we're looking at their mental wellness.
Right, and, and again, most of these are things they ask to either do or to look at, and I think it's important that we do. You make a great point about the environment that they're in, it's bad. There's just, there's no two ways about it. I believe last Friday, as they were able to work through, the supervisors and the managers were all able to go over to the new one. So dispatch in the new building is up on the third floor. It's no longer in a basement. It's, and I've just got to think, and not just for dispatch, but for anybody that works out of the square, every day we leave them in there is a day too long. We've just got to get that building finished and get them out there.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Joy.
Is there a reason why these calls are termed abandoned calls? Or is that just something that somebody came up with?
No, that is, that is the industry's term. And it, and that starts at your emergency communications district, because they're the gatekeeper, not just ours, everyone, and that is their industry standard.
Well, and I haven't been able to find it, but is there a definition of an abandoned call?
I, I don't know if there's a published definition. If you work your way backwards through it, it's a call that wasn't answered the first
I guess I've heard some suggestions that perhaps that's not a very good term.
Would agree.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Joy, do you have another question?
Well, I want to talk about compensation, because we've had compensation in all of these departments, and we're almost to the end, except for public health. Catherine's here somewhere. If we are going to consider 4% cost of living for police and fire, I would like for you to do numbers for me reflecting any change if we do 4% for all of the other city employees, knowing that right now you have 3% in your budget, which would be an increase of an additional 1%. Okay. There are a couple of, I think, I think we need, need that information tomorrow's fine, or whenever we can do that.
We may be able to work that up during a break or something.
I am concerned about code enforcement. We added one to code enforcement, and we added one to animal services. I'm concerned about both. I don't think that's enough, so let's take a look at those as well. The health department has one disease inspection, D I S, that is in the budget. It's my understanding that they have requested an additional one, and given the fact that we have the highest STD rate in the state of Texas here in Lubbock, let's see what we can do with an additional one D I S position. I would like to see how you allocated the, the one dropped ACM position, how you allocated that to those salaries, because that was done, when was that done? The spring, was that when that was done? When was it done?
It's not been done.
It's not been done?
No.
You're just suggesting that?
I'm proposing that.
Okay, okay, but I'd like to see how that, that works out, because we're also talking about, at least from my perspective, 4% COLA. Health benefits, we do, we do have in, in the health insurance, we have that, a substantial increase and a small increase. That's just one that is, has always been a difficult issue. I don't know how we fix it. I wish somebody had a good idea. We talked about the flexible office work schedules, proportional annual leave accrual, I think is great. Just wondering, with all of the compensation issues that we have, if we need at least, not now, but going into the new budget year, to look at our compensation study, because I understand that we've got compression that prevents us from doing more for lower-paid employees, and a little less for our higher-paid employees, but we've reached a point where we can't make that work, and I think that part of that is our compensation bans, if you want to call them that.
Ms. Joy, I'm going to interrupt you briefly here. We have one more slide. If you're going to go into all of the list of things, let's go ahead and let Mr. Atkinson finish up with public health.
Sure.
Before we go down that road, and then we'll save the rest of those questions at that time.
Sounds good, Ms. Joy.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right, Mr. Atkinson, public health.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be the last of the general fund departments for today. Public health, you do have a flat compensation. We do have new positions coming in, but we have additional grant funds that cover those positions, so that also covers the COLA and the benefits and those things. Same thing with health premiums, TMRS, able to deploy grant funds for the supply line items. We will have much lower rental charges when we get moved into the new facility, although we will pick up our scheduled charges because we have a new facility. Year-over-year, you're looking at 1.67 million to 1.7 million. Mayor, with that, that finishes the general fund departments. The next section would start capital.
All right, council, let's go ahead and take a break, let's take about a 10-minute break, then we will come back and can take questions or any other questions on pages two through 79, and then once those questions are done, we will go back into general capital projects. This will be in recess until 3:55. All right, it's good to see everyone back. They've dimmed the lights to make your napping options more pleasurable. Mr. Dotre will be handing out pillows and blankets for everyone, along with the dim So soon as I get two other council members, then we will begin. All right, Mr. Atkinson, I'm going to give the floor to Ms. Joy, so she can finish up her list of questions, and then we'll take any other questions, anyone has or comments on part one. And then we'll move into, begin slide 80, and that will be for general capital projects. Ms. Joy.
I wanted you to tell me a little bit more detail on the change to the tiers in the stormwater. We kind of went over it. You said there's a, a change to tier one residential, and then it's proportional for, I guess, tiers two, three, and four. Is that right?
That is correct.
And then, I guess, I was wanting to know how it is that we got to a decrease in, in the tier, stormwater.
Okay, and ma'am, if I might, when we start part two, we have the, the entire fund model is in slide 23 of our next set.
Okay.
For stormwater, and we can walk you right through those changes.
Okay, then we can wait on that one?
Yes.
How much is left of the master lease debt after this year, after this budget year? Is there anything left?
There is nothing left in the master lease.
But on the tax note that replaced the master lease?
There are portions of those tax notes that are left.
Do we know how much? I want it to go away.
To what?
I want it to go away.
It, it is going away, it's just not all gone. We, we can get that, that one will take a bit to pull.
Okay.
Because you got to break out the new stuff.
There's not much on that either, right?
Hold on, just, just saying, Ms. Joy, what was the question, Ms. Patterson Harris?
I was asking about...
I was asking about the amount that's still remaining to pay on that note.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just saying that it should not be much.
Well, and it's not a note, remember, because we weren't allowed to take it all out all at once. We had to take it out on maturities.
And tranches.
I've been told not to use that word in public.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Ms. Joy.
On the compensation, you mentioned, I think on engineering particularly, that when we do capital projects, then we have the ability to basically include the cost of an engineer's work in that capital project. And I want us to look at doing the same method on capital projects or projects that the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance is doing, because it is increasingly evident that on their projects, it requires a lot of staff time to do that. And I think that part of that cost that the city incurs needs to be part of those projects that they are undertaking. We can't do that in this budget, but it became apparent to me as I went through capital, and I went through looking at compensation. I know that we're spending large amounts of staff time on those leader projects. So would like you to take a look at that. And I yield the floor.
Any other questions before we move to general capital projects? All right, Mr. Atkinson?
Okay, let's jump back in. We'll go to... Sure, we'll go to that slide. Slide 81. Start, council, with some discussions about your remaining ARPA dollars. Recall that when we had your council planning session last fall, November, we identified a series of the items to where the council had said, yes, we'll commit these dollars towards this category. And we knew that some of those, for various different reasons, were not going to come through, and now we know where many of those stand. So to start with, I want to talk about the potential of reallocating some of those previously allocated dollars. The first one, just as it was last fall, would be the $2 million set aside for broadband. Since the council, a couple of years ago, set aside that broadband money, both the federal and the state government has come up with a tremendous amount of money to invest in the broadband. The state of Texas has taken the lead. They actually have the B D O, the Broadband Development Office. They're holding meetings here in Lubbock and all around the region. Are ARPA dollars going to that as duplicative? And I think you're paying for something that's going to get done anyway. So we can repurpose those dollars back to current needs for the city of Lubbock. Small business grants. We kind of thought there would be slow uptake on that, just because the council had previously done a direct small business grant program. You had the PPP loans, you had all those other ones. We did start the program. We contracted with South Plains Association of Government to run it. They did a great job. They have 1.97 million left out of what we set in front of them to offer. There are just no more takers for that. So let's take that back and put it into another use. The nonprofit grants, better uptake than the small business, but still a little over 900,000 remaining. And some of y'all will remember, the third leg of that stool was the arts grant. They spent every one of those. That was a segment of the economy that had not had money previously. But as it relates to small business and nonprofits, you have those remainders today. We'll talk a little bit about homelessness. We have $3.5 million currently allocated, first to find a solution or multiple solutions, and then, second, to fund them. Things are moving. They're moving pretty slowly in that. There may be some stuff come up. I'm going to recommend that we take only 500,000 out of that, leaving 3 million as the remainder, but the 500 back to work, and you'll see it here in my capital in a moment. Leave the three out there, knowing, though, the December 31st, 2024 deadline to commit is a federal statutory deadline. I think we're going to need to look twice at homelessness and also at job training, starting very early next calendar year. And by early, I'm talking January. And if we're not seeing pegs come out to spend those dollars, we may wish to bring them back and use them again. Not doing it at the moment, just kind of giving all of us a fair warning that I think that's coming.
Can you repeat that for me? I have to make sure I hear it properly.
Fair warning that that's coming?
No.
The part about the homelessness and the job training? Okay. If the council does what we've recommended here and pull that 500,000 out of homeless, there's still $3 million on the table. There has been almost no expenditure of that. I think if we're not seeing some real pegged-out uses by January of 2024, we're going to need to revisit what to do with those dollars. I say the same thing as it relates to job training. I'll contradict myself a little bit, but I'm still going to say the same thing with job training. You know, when we first put those dollars out, the city helped fund the TPM, the Talent Pipeline Management Program, through the chamber, which was all designed to get people into the medical field, starting at the lowest levels up through nursing. We did that by providing scholarships to multiple agencies. That money ran out the door, and I hope all those people at work. It went great. We've used some of the job training money with the council's permission to do our summer field program, to do our C D L program, to do things like that. We've always tried to find a way to work on skilled trades, and that has moved very slowly. Wish it were not the case, but that is the case. So I would probably put the same deadline on the job training dollars and say, if we're not seeing significant movement by early January, that we need to consider at least putting those monies to use elsewhere. All in, it's a significant amount of money. For today's discussion, we've got 5.3 million for reallocation. We have unallocated money. Here is my recommendation. Here's how we built the budget. I do want to add, here's my contradiction. I do want to add 1.6 to the job training, and I'll explain that on a later slide. That's the new stuff that the city can do, and we can do ourselves. We control it. Another 400 into parks, that's to continue on the playground program. I recommend 9.45 million go to utility capital. That is mainly wastewater, and it's also part of why I don't need a wastewater rate increase. But there is, I believe, one, maybe more than one, but I think there's one water project that we would fund. Still leave out 500,000 as contingency. And where that leaves you, out of the sum total of your original 56.5 million dollar ARPA, that takes your unallocated balance down to $6,313. Again, with the caveat that you may have some recapture through homelessness and through job training. The next slide is ARPA at a greater level of detail, if you want to look at it. So let's advance it one. There we go.
Mr. Atkinson, hold just a minute. Mr. Brer has a question on your previous slide.
I may be wrong about this, but I think I was under the impression that that, we pretty much tapped out what we can put into parks. Is that right? Is that 400,000?
We have not. What we have tapped out, the city committed about 10.232 million to public safety. There is not a category in ARPA for public safety. There is what they call general revenue replacement, and it was $10 million for the city council to deploy as they choose. We put it all into public safety, so that category is totally tapped out. Parks are a named eligible use for ARPA, so there's not a category limit to that, only the council's limit.
Okay. So some of the money that we have, if it's not allocated otherwise, could be used in parks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
On the budgeted uses, under the contingency, can you define that a little bit more, what you have in mind?
What I have in mind is some small amount to keep in our pocket, knowing that hardly anything today comes in at what it was bid to be.
Isn't that good enough?
Ms. Joy.
Looking at public health, that current appropriation is for the health department, correct?
Yes. For the building.
For the building, at 3,500 from the county. So what, the remaining funding of, what does it say, 13? No, 3,422,000. Is that to finish the building, or is it for other programs?
It's to finish the contracts on the building and the furnishings, fixtures, and equipment.
Okay. So in this year's budget, have you allocated monies to public health from ARPA, additional ARPA funding?
No.
Okay. My understanding is there was a request for transitional care clinic?
There was, yes.
And we haven't appropriated the request?
Well, I don't know that a request was actually submitted. You and I have discussed it, and I've been over it with Mr. Howerton.
Right.
Roughly 190,000, if I recall.
I think that's close.
Yeah. Let us go back and look at that. That was for a service, not a facility? Is that right?
That's correct. It is, the clinic would have been in the health department, okay? But it was my understanding that the request had been made, and that it would be paid from ARPA funds, which obviously we have additional ARPA funds to do that transitional care center. Where's Mr. Howerton? Is he back?
Ms. Joy, could you restate the question? I guess maybe council looks confused as to what your question is.
The question is, was, is there in the budget funding for the transitional care clinic? And I think you told me no.
I do not believe there is currently.
And is it possible to put or use some of these additional ARPA funds for that purpose, so that it doesn't have to be in the budget per se?
And doesn't have to come out of the general fund?
Right.
Right. We'd be glad to look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions at this time? All right. Back to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Okay. If there's no further ARPA questions, let's go to page 83, and we'll start into the general fund capital for the year. Page 83 is the category for the administrative services group. If you'll come over to the line that says, or to the column that says new cash, old cash, probably simpler, because those negative numbers are where we're proposing to reallocate the ARPA. So those will match what you saw two slides ago. Net new money is into our facility maintenance fund. That's $200,000 of new cash. That's $120,000 of what we call old cash. That's money we saved from other projects, and now we're reallocating it into this one. So for your administrative services, pretty light year, 320,000 facility maintenance. Go to the next slide, please. Some golf course improvements at the top, and if you'll notice, that 85,000 is in other cash. Other cash, in this case, is there is actually, there are actually, two separate capital accounts related to the golf course. One is held by the city, one is held by the contractor. So a portion of the fee paid per round of golf goes to the city for future golf course capital. A portion goes to the contractor. That's the capital we're using here, and that's why it is other cash. It's not coming out of your general fund. It is not coming out of your reserve. It's dedicated money. The parks, playground, phase two, you can see that we have put city dollars into it in the amount of just under 750,000 over the last couple of years. We're proposing 428,848, and that is your ARPA. So it carries over to the right, and you can see it in the ARPA column. Down towards the bottom, you see L A H, that's Lake Allen Henry. You see the maintenance building and the dump station. You see those are funded in other cash. Lake Allen Henry Recreation has its own reserve fund. It's a very small fund, but it has those dollars available to make those improvements. And then finally, amenity replacement program, the amount of $100,000 new cash, that is general fund cash. Amenity replacement is the parks account that allows them, over the course of the year, to do the little, simple things. Replace a bench, add a bench, fix a trash can, bring a new trash can, those types of things. The capital for culture and recreation is pretty tight this year. It's 803,000, but note that 428 of that is ARPA. Moving on. Next category is public safety and health. On this one, you see 650,000 in new cash for the public safety improvements. That is an ongoing capital account for those items. And at the bottom, you see the purchase, installation, and training of specialized camera system. That is the updated body camera system for P D. So it is in capital. Collectively, 3.2 million to go there. Next page starts public works. Let me make a quick sidebar comment. I know, council, we have been working somewhat tirelessly to work on Upland, 66 to 82nd. If you'll remember, that is a project that those of us that serve on the M P O had gone back to get additional funding. We did get that. It's not much, but it's very helpful. The estimates continued to rise. We postponed the bid lead on that. It's a tech stop bid to October. That project is fully funded in this proposed budget, but the details are in gateway, so we'll see that in part two. So just know that it's not dropped, it's coming. These are the true general fund-funded capitals here. Start out with your American Disability Act ramp and sidewalk, the second row, 250,000 in other cash. Council, I propose that also to be gateway. We did revise that resolution, so this would be specifically to be used solely within the loop, and it's gateway cash. Moving down to the middle...
Ms. Atkinson, just briefly, sorry for interrupting. Ms. Patterson-Harris has a question.
Thank you very much. Is that in addition to the...
It is.
The 500,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
With this proposed budget, council, you're able to deploy an additional $750,000 of gateway cash, only to be used within the loop.
I just had to stop you and make sure I wasn't dreaming, because the whole idea, and I know that some citizens are probably paying close attention to the fact that we're looking at actually using those gateway funds within, inside the loop. There was a huge outcry, because so many of the citizens and neighborhoods felt like they were being totally ignored. And I am excited, and I don't want this to stop in this fashion. You know, whether I'm here or not, I think it's important that we do that, that we stay up on the things that are inside the loop, within the older neighborhoods, as we continue to do the things we need to do with the newer ones that are coming into the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would offer, just as we discussed in street maintenance, this will be in a separate capital account. It will be separately accounted, reported, so that we can provide all of that accountability. As it relates to future years, would certainly deploy what we can. I don't think the fund will carry this same commitment each and every year, but as it's available, we committed to deploy it, and here it is. All right. Middle of the page, you have your street maintenance 2023. There is your 13 million dollars, 1 million more than we had a year ago. And then you see a good list of your phase-two street bond projects. So for the coming year, Upland, or 34th Street, Upland to Milwaukee. Moving down, you've got Upland, 34th to 50th, Upland, 19th to 34th, all bond-funded projects. Skipper Row, the Milwaukee project, which is the North City Limit... Skipper Row, the Milwaukee Project, which is the North City Limits to 4th, 114th, Frankford to Slide, 146, Quaker to Indiana, and then Upland 50th to 66, so the north piece of Upland on that. Counsel, those are exactly in the order that we presented to you right after the Street Bond passed. Final item on this part of the capital is the Impact Fee Report Update in the amount of 200,000. That is a statutorily required report that we have to prepare and ultimately present back to you, and also to have available to the public. So it's hard to believe, but we're on the five-year mark for the impact fees coming in. Not five, but we're getting close. No, not quite. Next page, moving over to Traffic. Would really like to continue the program to put the battery backups at our various traffic signals. We've seen the results of that, or the benefit of that already, we need to keep it up. The next one, the Fiber Optic Expansion Continuation Program. David Bragg and his team really manage and install and make work all the fiber for the city. That's not something that can ever stop unless the city were to stop. And then Traffic Signal, ongoing program, adding 225,000 to that, for a total of 400. Solid Waste is the next piece, actually the final piece of the general fund capital. We've already mentioned the next part of the second half of the funding for the transfer station at 14, and the sale, I believe it is actually sale number six at the Big Landfill for 7, 21 million total. Mayor, that's going to conclude your general capital, so stop and turn it over to you.
All right, any other questions on capital on this last presentation? Of course, we can have follow-up questions tomorrow. Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
We have questions that we would like to ask staff individually. Could we do that today sometime after, or?
Absolutely. We would welcome that.
Have a few questions.
All right. Ready to continue?
Mayor, with that, I would like to continue on Part II.
All right.
We're all ready to go there. In fact, Cheryl, if you don't mind, as we jump into Part II, letting LPNL, oh, they're here. What about LEDA? Okay, and we can hold them off if we need to. Okay. Counsel, we'll start on page two, or three, or four, or five, or something like that. Start on page five. This will be your Water, Wastewater Revenue Summary. Some highlights on the revenue portion, we're almost there. Keep going. There we go. Okay. You do see the revenue increasing, some of that is growth in your system, a lot of that is our proposed rate increase that we have presented. The wastewater, again, we are not proposing to change wastewater rates, that is just the growth in the system making that change in your revenue. Interest earnings are up, we are also going to draw down less of the excess reserves because of fewer new capital projects. Remember, we're also proposing 9.45 million in ARPA, so that's a huge offset. Go to page six, you've got your wastewater expense summary. Compensation and benefits is up for the standard reasons, but this is also where you see the transfer of the seven utility meter technicians. The pilot will go up due to the tax rate and the franchise fees, and this is really growth in the system, somewhat the rate increase. Our transfer over to LPNL will go down, and that's a result of moving those seven meter technicians over. It is not, bottom line, it's budget neutral. We were already paying for them, we were paying for them by transferring the dollar. Now you keep the people and you keep the dollar, but please don't think that's a literal reduction. We do have the fewer new capital projects, but again, we have ARPA that we'd like to deploy very heavily into the capital for water and wastewater. So the next page, and the page after it, this is going to look at our rate design model. This rate model does include the 25 cents base and those volumetric charges. For wastewater, it includes no changes. So if you look at the proposed fiscal year '24 at the top, here's your revenues, and you see the revenue is going to 163 million from 161 million, that's for the reasons that we looked at two slides ago. If you look at total salaries, coming down one more line, from 11-8 to 12-2, as well as the associated benefits, that's the COLA, that's moving, I'm off a year, actually. Sorry about that. Let's, don't do FY '25 yet. I hope that's the right answer for '25, but I don't know that. Okay, let me go back here. For the total salary line, '23, the current year, it's 10 and a half. For '24, it's proposed at 11-8. Now it makes more sense that that is the COLA plus the seven people coming across, my apologies. You see the commensurate change with benefits coming down below that. Various line items, about $100,000 more expense in pilot. Franchise fees up by about 400, taking us to a bottom line total, current year 70.2, new year 73.8. Next series are the transfers, you've got the indirect cost, transfer to LPNL, which you see going down by just a hair over the million dollars, and the transfer to others going slightly up. All in, that's a change from 8.6 million to 8.8 million. Come down to the cash capital outlays, pay-as-you-go funding, cash capital, current year is 22.1 million, new year is 18.1 million. You go to the next page, we start getting into the fund stuff. So at the top, you have all the various calculations that are related to your debt service, your revenue requirement. You see the breakdown of it there. It's probably time we take the Build America Bonds off, those are gone and have been gone for a while, so we'll eliminate that line for next time. The new debt service, you see that we're not adding to that on here, it picks up in following years. Carrying down to the bottom, and we will close the year with revenues over expenditures by approximately 1.6 million dollars. Come down into the bottom, look over where we have your debt service row. So current year debt service, 58.6, the new year 59.5. Those next two numbers are pretty important to us. So the coverage target, that is the percent of your base that comes over and covers, our target number is 1.75. That is very much related to how you secure your bond ratings, how you secure the best financial rates, and all of those. We're at 1.61 in the current year. If we do the rate increase as proposed, we go to 1.72. 1.75, we should cross that line the next year, but then it's going to wiggle for a while, all those can be adjusted in the future. There's no reason to carry out and get much above. It's not a bad deal if you're just a little bit below, but the closer we can center up on the 1.75, especially as we look well into the future and we get towards the Lake Seven discussions, that's going to be very important to us. We've got the coverage targets, we need to keep the ratios close. The final set of lines on here, we're looking at our reserve policies. You have your beginning net position, your ending net position, you subtract out your reserve requirement, which is 25% of revenue, and the bottom line change for your excess reserves for this, 7.57 this year, 6.4 in the new year. The very bottom line on here is a pretty, pretty important deal, just as those coverage ratios and targets. The other metric that we get graded very heavily on is your base rate is a percent of your debt service. So base rate is kind of, it's a fixed fee. You know what it is, multiplied by your number of accounts for the year. Your volume charges, obviously, are subject to change. Current year, our base rate as a percent of debt service is 91%. This chart doesn't go back far enough, but we've had that down in the low 80s, so we've really made a huge improvement in it. For next year, our base rate as a percent of debt service would be 93%. They're moving slowly, but they're moving in the right direction. We're very happy with those. One more page now is going to take you into the water base, the water volume. So let me do the base first, and then we'll come back and talk about volume. So for water base rate, 3/4 inch is the smallest, it's the standard meter for a residential service, so it all starts there. This year and last year both, the water base was $18.50. If we take the 25 cents and add it on, it would make it $18.75. Believe Ms. Joy asked earlier, and I think Ms. Patterson-Harris mentioned it also, future rate increases. You see the program on how we build our models as it walks over to the right. The only one under consideration for you this year is, of course, fiscal year '24. 3/4 inch meter goes up by 25 cents. A 1-inch meter would go up by 41 cents, and then as the meters get larger, that same ratio is applied. That's the base, that's what the net impact of the base change would be. Jump back up to volume. Volume has not been adjusted in longer than the base rates have been adjusted. Base rates do include the first 1,000 gallons for free. So for volume, you see zero to 1,000 is blank. 1,000 to 5,000, so these charges are per 1,000 gallons. Today, we're at $4.03. The rate increase is recommended to go to $4.10, that is the 7 cents that we talked about. You can see how water gets progressively more expensive as a meter uses more water each month, carrying out to your largest category, the 30,000-plus, which today is 8.57, and would be $9.25. So with that, counsel, any questions on the proposed changes to the water rates, base or volume? Okay, let me do wastewater, this one's going to be real easy. If you look at the bottom, nothing changes. Nothing changes. Hopefully, no questions on that, nothing changes. Let's go to the capital, be on page 10. First funding for capital is $200,000 in new cash to continue the fire hydrant repair and replacement program. That has worked well for us. Remember, counsel, I believe two years ago, you allowed us to add a crew dedicated to the fire hydrants. They spent their first year not doing what we thought, they spent their first year taking apart old fire hydrants to scavenge the parts to put in the new fire hydrant, because we couldn't get parts. That's worked its way out, that crew is working for us and glad to have them. The next is Lake Seven Permitting and Mitigation at 1.8 million. That shows is prior year cash, but if you go down to 92617, Lake Seven, Construction and Mitigation, we're off, we already had the money. We're offsetting it and putting it into the proper account to try to basically expedite the permitting for Lake Seven. Come down to Pumping System Improvements, Phase Two, this is also an ongoing, a lot of these are ongoing capital maintenance accounts, we try to add to them each year. 500,000 to add there. Underneath it, a $1 million add to the large valve project, ongoing, new cash. Skip over the 1.8 D-Duck that balances itself out. 2.3 million new money for water meter sets, 2.55 for water line replacement, 2.5 water line replacement ahead of street paving. So to the extent we can, if we're going to repave a street, we're going to come in and fix the lines under it before it's repaved. Water lines ahead of arterial roadways, that's had a small amount of money in it, and it hasn't really been used because we haven't done new arterials. We are doing a lot of new arterials now, so here's some capital to help us do that. Also new capital. I neglected the water line replacement FY '21 in 2.55 million, that is ARPA. That's the ARPA designation to this one. Second page, we have the Lake Allen Henry Erosion Maintenance, that is just taking care of the pump stations and that very long pipeline to bring the water to us. Pump Station 11 Rehabilitation, taking out old elevated and ground storage tanks, I think that will probably become an ongoing project that we try to add to each year. Utility Relocations ahead of Lake Seven, that is new cash. Locate and Repair Water Valves, this is a smaller ARPA project, 600,000. And then you see BCWF is the Bailey County Well Field Supply Optimization. Remember, that well field went into service in 1957, and we still are using it, although every year we use less on purpose. Cleaning the Lake Allen Henry Raw Water Line, and then General Electrical System Improvements. Bottom line total is 14.5 million dollars of capital coming into water, 11.375 is new cash, 3.1 will be ARPA. Okay, I'll jump over to wastewater capital. You will see more ARPA being used over here. So we've got sewer line upsizing for development, that's when a development comes in, and let's say they need a 10-inch, this gives us dollars to pay in because we think the future next phases might need a 12-inch. So that's our cash on hand to do that. SEWRP is the Southeast Water Reclamation Plant, that's your large sewer plant, 19 million gallons a day. Plant Three Nutrient Removal, Plant Three is the plant that operates at the oldest technology level, as that is also pegged into Lake Seven in the future. We're making our steps to getting that to a stream quality treatment, there's more steps than just this, this is getting us started on it. Major, I'm sorry, East Lubbock Future Expansion, 400, we've had a million in that account, it's largely been used, there is growth in East Lubbock. We have money for sewer ahead of Broadway, sewer line replacements and sewer taps, the Northwest Loop Interceptor Project at 500, sewer ahead of street paving, so same as with water, 350. Coming farther down, you have the Wastewater Collection Master Plan Update, 850, Southeast Water Reclamation Plant Clarifier Rehabilitation, 200, water rec electrical replacement, 500, lift station rehab, 1.45 million, and then manhole adjustments, that's where we're able to bring them up or down so that they actually end up level with the street, so. It's not a lot, but I figured we'd really like that one. Now we'll go over and look at the two projects proposed for ARPA. You've got the Major Sewer Line Condition Repair Project for 5 million of ARPA, and Additional Water Reclamation Plant Replacements at 1.3 million, so 14.6 total, 8.3 is new cash, 6.3 is ARPA. Any questions, water, wastewater capital? Okay, some fee changes that we have lined up for your consideration. The reconnect, disconnect fees, both regular daily service and after-hours service, we're asking for a $5 bump in each of those. This is largely the cost of labor to go back and disconnect or turn something back on for non-payment. We have discussed already the volumetric fees and the base rate fees related to water. Underneath that, you have the Water Meter Set Fees. Counsel, a few years ago, allowed us to change the ordinance to where these fees adjust each year based on actual cost. Thing to remember about a Water Meter Set Fees is that's not a general fee that goes across our consumers, that is a fee for a meter set for a particular property. So that's what we've got there. Sewage disposal, the industrial permit, we are asking for a $350 change, we jumped it a little bit last year, I don't think we got it where we needed to go. And the Septic Holler Permit, so these are the big pump-out trucks, and there are septic tanks in the city, and they come and use this. The majority of that volume does not come from within the city for the septic haulers. See some various fees underneath there, these are related to cleaning out sewer lines. These are related to cleaning out sewer lines. Probably the one to most draw your attention to is our vacuum truck, or what's called a Vacter truck. We can't run that truck anymore for a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, so we're asking to increase that to two hundred. You see the operator cost, our smoke test, that's to help find leaks. Miscellaneous leases, these are really just built into lease agreements we have. The surcharge fees is a great discussion on total suspended solids and biochemical oxygen demand. This is a fee that is assessed based on what is chemically in wastewater that comes out of a commercial or industrial facility. If those chemical or if those constituents are such that it really does cost us more to treat it, we pass that cost along. Note that there are some places we cannot take their wastewater at all because it would wreck the treatment system. That's not what these are. It's just stuff above our standard limits. And then you see we do the same thing for the septic loads. If a septic hauler brings us in stuff that is above our limits, we have that. The last one is new, dumping fee weekend per load. We have had a dramatic increase in the number of septic trucks coming in on the weekend. And what that generally means is we either take one of the operators off of what they're doing to monitor the plant to handle that, or we have to bring somebody in. So we've not charged them for doing that. We charge volume, but we don't charge them for the fact they came in. We would like to add that fee for them coming in on the weekend. Want to do Lubbock Power and Light now? With that, we'll ask if Mr. Ivy has made it.
He's.
Mr. Hall has made it. These two have nicknames now, but I'm not. And when it all comes down to it, you can count on Joe. Joe will always step to the plate and deliver for us. So Joe Jimenez.
The floor is yours, Joe. There you go. Okay. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. We're back again for another year. Before we get into the budget, I wanted to kind of give you our overview of LPNL moving forward. Again, you know, this is a big year for us as we transition, so I just wanted to kind of give you our timeline. So we do plan to transition to the retail market in twenty-three, twenty-four, and so the timeline of that is we anticipate moving the thirty percent of our load still in SPP. You know, we still have thirty percent of our load remaining in the Southwest Power Pool. And so we plan to transition that to the ERCOT market around the December timeline at the end of the year. So that's pending FERC approval. So once we get that approval, we're ready to transition that thirty percent of the load over to ERCOT. So it, once that happens, we plan to move our customers to the retail electric market in March two thousand and twenty-four. So again, that's the plan, to give them the opportunity to pick a retail electric provider, which this retail electric provider will provide all the energy for our customers going forward. So essentially, once we go to the retail market, they'll pick a provider, and LPNL will essentially become a posing wires company. So we'll have a delivery rate, and we will no longer be purchasing energy for our customers. All that will be handled by the retail electric provider. So again, with that being said, you know, we are no longer going to bill our customers directly, so our charge will be on the retail electric provider's total electric bill. So we're going to be a little surcharge on that line item. The rep will collect that revenue and then transfer it back to the utility. So that's the way, that's the transition moving forward. Again, this is all based on us intending moving in March two thousand and twenty-four. So the theme of our budget is you'll see that our revenues and expenses have drastically decreased for next fiscal year. If you remember, the two-thirds of our budget is related to purchase power costs. So as that part of our operations goes away and is handled by the reps, so do the revenues and the expenses for LPNL. So our focus shifts from being an energy provider to being reliable, to being compliant, and to monitor our distribution and transmission infrastructure. You know, we're going to be a delivery company going forward, so we have to be the best at what we do going forward. Again, so our budget for next year is proposed, that we will transition in March two thousand and twenty-four. That's how it's modeled out. Again, if for some reason we don't meet those deadlines, remember that we can always amend the budget. So we have what was called a purchase, a PCRF, which is a purchase cost recovery factor. So any of the energy that we purchase out in the market, that's automatically, it's a pass-through cost, so it's automatically transferred to the customer. So if for some reason there is a delay, we will do business as usual. We will procure the energy for our customers until we're ready to transition them to the retail market, and we can amend the budget as we go. And again, it's a pass-through cost, so whatever we expense, we're going to, we're going to collect in revenues to pass on to the customer. So that's kind of the transition of this. Again, this, this budget, proposed budget, has been reviewed and approved by the Electric Utility Board earlier this month, and it's recommended to you all for final approval. And I'll pause there, see if there's any questions about the transition date. I have, of course, my staff with me, my team. So if there's any specific questions about that transition to the retail market, we can address those before we go into the budget. But I wanted to put that out there because you're going to see that's the major theme of our budgets. Pretty much all of our operating accounts have decreased, and it's, it's all purchase power driven, the majority of that. So I wanted to put that out there and address that before we go into every one of our accounts. All right, thank you, Joe. Good. Okay, well, we'll go on to the metered revenues. If you can see, meter revenues are down thirty-eight point four million. Again, the reason for that is, well, once we move into the retail market in March two thousand and twenty-four, we'll be collecting on the next line item. You'll see that's the distribution system revenue rate, which is about seventy-three million for next year. So that rate, that rate will become effective once we transition our customers to the retail market. Until that time, we will collect our current base rates, which have been flat since two thousand and seventeen. We haven't increased those base rates. Those are the current base rates and the charges that we will charge our customer until we move them to the retail market. So the distribution system revenue is about seventy-three point one million for next fiscal year. Going forward, it's about a total of about a hundred and forty-five million dollars going forward. That's going to be, in the financial model, you'll see that our, our distribution revenue is about a hundred and forty-five million. Again, you know, going forward, the main source of our revenue is going to be our transmission cost of service and this distribution system revenue going forward. So this is going to cover all the O and M, all the debt service related to distribution, and also another thing, it's a little bit further on the slide, but the franchise fee equivalent is also included in this delivery rate. So, you know, if you remember, our franchise fee were about five percent of our total revenues. We've shifted that to a per kilo, a percent kilowatt. And so what it does, it's, it transfers to the city approximately about thirteen million going forward in the model, which is a more, more reliable revenue stream, you know. Prior to that, it was five percent of revenue. So, you know, you know market, the price of natural gas goes up and down, so it's kind of, it was an unstable transfer to the city because, for example, last year's purchase, I mean, franchise fee was about one point three million dollars more than it is for next year. So this provides the city with a more reliable revenue stream, and it's about thirteen million dollars going forward. And the only thing, the only way that increases is based on load. So the more load you get, the larger amount will transfer to the city. Again, our power cost recovery factor, our PCRF, is down a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. Again, last year, we budgeted for entire year a purchase power cost. This, for this, next year's budget, we've only budgeted up till March for those purchase power costs. But just want to harp again, that that's something that can be amended if there is a delay in the timeline of transitioning. It's a strictly pass-through cost, so we'll, we'll adjust the budget as we see accordingly. Our transmission cost of service revenues are up two point three million. They've gone up from about forty-two million to about forty-four million dollars annually. And the reason for the increase is, you know, we did an interim filing, and we didn't have all of our assets related to the transmission build-out in the T-cost filing yet. So now that we have all those transmission assets, and they're all in the ground and in service, we've added those additional assets to our, our base rate. So that's increased our T-cost revenues about two point three million. One thing I wanted to still harp on is, you know, we get about forty-four point four million dollars annually on transmission cost of service, but when we enter ERCOT, we paid a hundred and ten million whole harmless payment to ERCOT, which is going to be paid over five years. So we were paying twenty-two million dollars annually, and that, that offsets our transmission cost of service, so we get about twenty-two million back to us annually. We will keep making this payment to about January two thousand and twenty-seven. After that, the whole forty-four point four million will come to the utility in the home. Miscellaneous is down six point six million. The reason for that is we had a one-time insurance proceeds we're expecting to receive for the repairs to the Massengill Turbine. We had one of our generation plans go out. So as of today, we've collected about four million dollars on that, and we're still anticipating about another one point six million dollars when it's, it's said and done. So it's something, it's a claim that's still in risk, but we're anticipating getting that entire amount in, in the next fiscal year. And again, our excess reserves, so our expenses are higher than our, our revenues are higher than our expenses are, our excess reserves have moved up to about four point six million Any questions on the revenues? Okay, moving on to expenses. So our compensation and benefits pretty much remain flat. You know, we had a net decrease of nineteen FTEs. I know Mr. Atkinson has mentioned we moved seven FTEs to the water department, and you may see that it's not a big decrease. What happened is we repurposed eight FTEs, you know, so we had a net decrease of nineteen, but these eight repurposed FTEs are higher-paid positions. You know, they're more with compliance with, and have to be NERC certified and other criterias that they have. So it really wasn't a one-for-one watch. You, you take out a low, a field service employee and then get a higher-paid employee. It usually takes two-to-one to match those, those new higher-paid positions. So if you, that, along with the three percent cost of living adjustment, has kind of made our, our budget flat for the year. So compensation and benefits is, is up slightly by ninety-eight thousand dollars. Again, same thing with our energy and fuel. That's just a decrease of purchase power costs. We have budgeted up till March only, so that, that's the difference. Instead of budgeting for twelve full months, we've only budgeted for six months in the next fiscal year. Same thing with transmission and capacity, purchase power costs. You know, once we go to the retail market, those costs will, will cease to exist. Remember, ERCOT is the energy-only market. There's no capacity. So in our model, you will see that we've only budgeted for capacity up till December two thousand and twenty, to the end of the year, and that's just while we have that thirty percent of our load remaining in the Southwest Power Pool. Once we move that thirty percent, there will be no, no longer be capacity costs in our budget. Our other, other O and M has increased twenty-two point four million. I know this looks like a big increase, but the main, the main thing of this was our transmission costs were in our PCRF. So now that we don't have the pass-through cost of PCRF, we have moved them to the operations account, but that twenty-two million is, is, that amount is included in our, our distribution system rate, so that is being accounted for. So it's really not an increase in our, in our transmission costs, it's just a shift from the PCRF to our regular operation account. Our debt service did decrease about two million dollars due to the payoff of two thousand and thirteen revenue bonds, along with some two thousand and sixteen A geo-refunding bonds that were paid out in fiscal year twenty-three. Again, franchise fee and pilot decreases lower, due to lower purchase power costs. If you recall, last year was a very high year for purchase power costs. Natural gas was up. Natural gas has decreased, and so that has lowered the FFE transfer to the city, and that, along with the shift of that percent kilowatt-hour equivalent of thirteen million is a reason for the reduction on that. Again, the same thing with pilot. Our CIP has increased from six point two million. I'm happy to say that the reason for this is the transfer of utilized cash is from nineteen million, we funded about nineteen million dollars in cash-funded projects last year. We're, we're doing about twenty-five million this year. One thing I'm happy to say, too, is throughout the, since I've been here, throughout the financial model, all five years of our capital program is strictly cash-funded. There is no debt anticipated to be issued over the next five years in our financial model. Any questions on the expenses? Yeah. So, so back to the, this is our financial model. Again, you know, we don't only forecast for the next fiscal year, we have a five-year plan now. As you can see that our, you can see the yellow line is our distribution system revenue. And when I mention that, you can see that that's the majority of our revenues going forward. Once we become a posing wires company, that's going to be our main revenue, along with the T-cost revenues. You can see the purchase power, which is in the orange line item, that goes away in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and is reduced for this, for this year. So it, it is a balanced budget for the next five years. One thing is, our general reserves do go up, you know. They go up dramatically in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, but the, the main reason for that, again, is we get that whole forty-four million back to us from the T-cost revenues. Right now, we're netting about twenty-two million up to January twenty-seven, so when we get that whole forty-four million, that's an opportunity to really do something with that extra revenue that's coming in. You know, it's up to, to the board and council to make those decisions, but you can lower the delivery rate out in the future, or we can pay off debt, and we can do other things with it, you know. So based on the rates, too, you know, those were approved by counsel earlier this month, and, and so those are the rates that are, that are kind of high for this fiscal year or the next fiscal year. But again, we're the new players in the market. We have a lot of stranded costs. We have a lot of transition costs, you know. So it's expected, these are, these people in the TDU market have been there twenty-plus years. We're brand-new coming into it. We had to pay a whole harmless payment to get in there. So, but, you know, it, it's a real, it's a real benefit for our citizens moving forward. They have the opportunity to choose their own provider, pick the plans that most benefits them, and so, you know, like, so out in the future years, it's going to be real beneficial to our, our customers. It's a little growing pains in the first couple of years, but once this whole harmless payment falls out, we can really do something to help alleviate the rates for our customers going forward. And with that, any questions?
Thank you, Joe. Great job. All right, Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pick up on page twenty-one, and we'll talk about stormwater. So page twenty-one are your, is your revenue service. Again, the only substantive change is decreasing the proposed rate. So what we're going to do, you can look over to the next-to-last column from the right. You see how these proposed decreases trigger. We've got better detail on another slide, so you can look at those, and we'll come back to them. Let's go to the expense. It's on page twenty-two. You know, the biggest increase besides the standard compensation and benefits is the cost of maintaining the detention basins and, of course, fleet maintenance. Again, we're getting a benefit from debt service rolling down without new debt added. We are getting the franchise fees that we pay to the city. Those will go down because the revenue will go down, and then a little bit less capital. So the next page is the fund model. You see at the top, total revenue current year, twenty-five point one million. Proposed revenue for next year, twenty-three point two. That's directly because of the rate decrease. Total expenditures in the current year are twenty-four point four, going down to twenty-three point four. So you do see that we are slightly under in that, about two hundred and six thousand dollars, just nearly two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Does not impact negatively the model and would not cause us to not be able to do the decrease. Go down to the key financial statistics. Those first three rows are your reserve policies. So we began the year, the current year, at nine point one million. You take out the required reserve, which is twenty percent of revenue, so four point nine, leaving four point two available. Starting next year, we predict eight point nine total available. The reserve fund requirement will go down because revenue will go down as well, leaving your total excess at about four point four eight, nearly four point five. The next set of lines will, I think, explain and maybe answer the question about how the rates trigger through the different tiers. Residential rate, tier one, is monthly rates. Current year is seven dollars and thirty cents. Next year, six dollars and seventy cents, so the sixty-cent decrease. Residential tier two, so we're into the larger ones. Current rate, eleven dollars and eighteen cents. Next year, ten dollars and twenty-five cents. Tier three, tier four, you see the same. It's pro-rata the same, or it's ratably the same. Tier four would go from twenty-one, twenty-two to nineteen dollars and forty-six cents. The commercial rate per ERU, and ERU stands for Equivalent Residential Unit. The ret, the commercial ERU would drop from today's twenty-one dollars and twenty-two cents to nineteen dollars and forty-six cents. So while the per dollar gets bigger as you go up, the rate change by percentage will stay the same. Go one more row to the right. I jumped into FY twenty-five on water wastewater, didn't mean to, but I do here. The model right now, subject to unforeseen circumstance, but right now, the model looks like we can continue triggering down some more rate decreases. They're just smaller as you go forwards. So questions on the stormwater rate? So questions on the stormwater rate?
Ms. Joy?
Stormwater rates. The reason we got into this tiered system was as a result of changing how we charged for stormwater, changed from meters to the...
Impervious cover.
Yeah, impervious. And so, one of the reasons at the time for that was because residential was bearing a larger percentage of the cost than commercial. Are we still, as residences, bearing the larger percentage of the cost? Or not?
Probably not the larger, Carrie. Any system that has a cap built into it, once things hit the cap, there is a cost shift in that case. This model of using impervious cover rather than just a meter, because a meter could have had only a driveway and a house as impervious cover, or it could have had a mall. This is a much, much better model to do that with, and it absolutely has less cost shift in it. But anytime you put a system together that's got caps in it, there will always be a shift.
And that is more applicable to the commercial, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
May proceed, Mr. Atkinson.
Okay, we'll go to the next page. Look at capital. So the big fancy digital orthophotography, that is the annual work that we do to fly very high resolution digital photography. It's part and parcel of how we manage the system. So you see that at 250. The watershed boundary and drainage studies at 275. Stormwater rehabilitation and maintenance at 600. That's the ongoing care and feeding of things that have been broken or need to be added. Moving down to upland, 66th Street Playa Drainage Improvements. Council, this is a project that's been long running to get us to where we can implement it. It will do a lot to alleviate some street flooding and bonding that we have over there. We've been able to fund that to the tune of 5.3 million to date with cash. We need 2.85 to finish it. We do propose that to be a revenue bond. Move down to Playa Lake 54 lateral extension. That is what's generally known as the Blue Sky Playa over on Fourth Street. That has also been a long running project. We have the solution to it now. It is also proposed to be a revenue bond coming through that, or a revenue supported bond coming through that. And then general stormwater system improvements for 750. Bottom line, 11,725,000 in total capital. 1.875 is cash. 9.85 is in revenue supported debt. Please note that revenue supported debt is factored into the model you looked at on the prior page and does not diminish your ability to do both the current rate decrease and ideally the future rate decreases as well. Okay, let's go to the lake. Yeah, it just looks like a whole bunch more numbers like the other ones. Okay, this is now going to be the model, just like we've seen before. This one is unique to Lake Allen Henry. The top will be the funding sources. Really, the big change there by percentage is interest, but that's because it's moving from $5,700 to $17,000. You see the hunting fees, the entrance fees, boat launch fees, camp fees, et cetera, carrying you all the way down. Total funding sources, current year, 716,000. Proposed budget, 957,000. We are proposing to use net assets or excess reserves in the amount of 262,000. You take that out, there's actually very little change in the revenue. Department expenses, department level expenses, currently 608,000. Proposed new budget, 661,000. So not a lot of change. The transfer to water remains the same. We are moving money to the capital project fund. Those were for the two we identified earlier. Carrying us over to the total expense, current year, 716,000. Proposed, 957. But again, the biggest part is the transfer over to Parks Capital, Maintenance Building, and the dump station. Next slide. This is for our boat slip rental fees. We are proposing some changes. So today, we've got an unnecessarily complex way to rent boat slips. And despite being complex, they're not actually different if you look at them. So a resident and a non-resident weekday versus weekend per night, even though they're all called out separate, they're all the same. We don't need that. We're proposing to take those four line items out. Instead, just have a boat slip rental fee. We would ask for $12 instead of 10 for that use. I'm sorry?
I didn't know we charged to rent all those boat slips.
Do we need to go back and look at the tapes?
No. I haven't been there overnight.
Let's review the tape.
Yes, sir. We'll have the tapes reviewed. Okay, how about the airport? Page 29.
Kelly's been here for four hours waiting for this, so let's...
And Mayor, if you would like, Ms. Campbell can present the budget. If not, I'll be glad to do it.
I bet she's good with you going ahead.
Pretty sure there were hand gestures back there. Okay, start on the revenue summary. We do have the landing operations, terminal operations are increasing. That is because all of your airlines and your tenants are on a rates and charge model that's part of their contract. They generally will adjust every year. Parking revenues, we do predict to be up slightly. Our transfer to what is known as PFC or Passenger Facility Charge, that will increase because the annual debt service requirements have increased. Remember, Passenger Facility Charge is that extra fee that is on your ticket. Would also note that the way that works, you need to be the airport that charges it because only the first two airports on a leg are going to get it, and the other ones will charge it if we don't. So good to have. Interest rates are helping as well. Revenue summary, we're changing from 14.6 million up to 18 million. So let's look at expenses. Standard compensation benefits, et cetera. Remember that we are adding the two employees due to the federal mandates for screening and other things. Maintenance and operations cost goes up because of the scheduled charges increase. We are buying a machine known as a continuous friction measuring device. That is a very sophisticated machine that tells you how much traction the runway has at any moment in time. So Kelly and I both remember way back when that was done with a trained person driving a vehicle at a high rate of speed and slamming on the brakes. Seriously. Obviously, there's better ways to do that now. You can contract, not more fun ways, that is, yes, sir. You can contract with firms that will come out at an interval that you specify. There's a minimum interval you have to do, but if you want to do it more frequently. And they'll, they'll charge you a lot of money, and they'll give you some very sophisticated friction data. If we buy this machine, of course, it's available to us at any moment for any reason to go out and take those readings. Kelly and her team, though, have worked with surrounding regional airports because they're in the same boat we are. They're having to pay a contractor. If we own this machine, we already have a number of airports that have agreed to work with us to where they could rent it when we're not using it, get their measurements at a much lower cost than a contractor, and bring it back. So I think this is a very good purchase to do it. We have an increase in credit card fees. This is mainly related to the parking system. We do have to transfer additional dollars to the ARPA, Airport Rescue and Fire Fighting. And we are beginning to reduce, now, the airport's ARPA is separate from the 56 and a half million we looked at earlier. In fact, they actually had an extra bucket the city didn't get. But that is beginning to start working its way out of that system. So the fund model is on the next page. You see the current year's budget with the blue heading on it, moving its way down. Let's jump down to the excess reserves. So our beginning balance is 26.6 million. Programming, 3.6 million use, and 23 million remaining in your excess reserves at the Next item, the operating and capital, I'm sorry, is the capital improvement budget, page Remove and reseal joints in concrete. That will always be an ongoing project, although currently it's finished, so we're pulling those dollars out, putting them back into reserve to use. Same thing with the cargo apron expansion. But then we're picking up some new projects. Extend taxiway L, taxi line addition, and the apron expansion at 2.8 million. I believe that is our matching money that will go into that. Then we have airfield pavement, airfield property, each of those a small amount. Safety management system, SMS, that is a new federal, it's not a new federal program. It's just now been triggered federal program, so we have to come in compliance with that. And continued mechanical system improvements. All in what you're seeing on here, 3.6 million of new cash, but you have the two offsets that bring that down, and that's why you're not seeing much change in the reserves. Fee changes, starting on the next page. Most of these changes are per lease language, so they're not really arbitrary. They're actually pre-agreed to. You see how that carries down through the first page here. Moving over to the second page, we do have some changes though that are within the airport and the city council's control. Let's go to tenant parking fee, tenant parking fee per year. It's been $55 on that. We're asking for a $5 increase to 60. Underneath, we have some other changes here. The short term parking has been $12 for a long time, just as covered parking has been $9. We're asking to adjust those to where short term would be $18, and covered would be $12. $12 for covered parking anywhere in town is still pretty cheap. We would like to drive utilization both into that covered parking and into shelter parks. So we're asking for a 50 cent deduct from the airport shelter park, and that's the one, of course, that's corner MLK and Regis. Finally, the rental car parking from each rental car agency per month has been $29. Remember, they have a brand new facility that we built for them and opened about four years ago. Change that upwards by $1. Any questions on any of those? Okay. Let's move to city bus now. It's on page 36. See at the top, city transfer, this is the general fund dollar from the city that goes into, in effect, balance the city bus budget. The actual expense for that in fiscal year '22 was 1.6 million dollars. That's a little artificial because we had the equivalent of ARPA money to throw into that, separate bucket, but same purpose. That is gone, so this current year, we were at 2.4 million from the general fund to balance city bus. This year, it's at 2.458, so a $58,000 increase. Chris, Mr. Howerton, and that crew did a great job. Departmental operations, that revenue has increased slightly in the current year, 737. Predicted to go up to 871 in the new year. Advertising revenue is flat. The tech contract went up last year, so it will not go up next year, so it's flat. And the transfer from what we call Economic Development Fund has been 400,000. That number's flat going back, I believe, to 2012. Short version, current year revenue, 8.38. New budget, 8.6. Expenses, I'm sorry, the grant funding, current year, 18.7 million. New year, 18.75, so a very slight increase there. Carrying out to the total funding source, total department level expenses, balancing between 18.7 million in revenue and 18.7 million in expense. Questions on city bus? Okay. Next would be the cemetery, starting with the fund summary, the revenue summary. We really are not expecting or anticipating substantive changes in the operational revenue. The excess reserve is, the change is going down. We funded a one-time deal last year. We're continuing on that. Go to your expenses. You see that same CIP transfer going down, so coming out of the budget. Debt service, very, very slightly down. Total expense for the current year of 1.1. Total expense next year, 811,000. We do have some proposed fee changes. On this one, we've given you a four-year past history and then the one year new. So those top is lot sales. When we did the budget review and we asked about the charge to the county, for those two lots, and nobody knows when that last ever changed, so we're asking for a $25 change on each of those. And then you see it carry down from infant cremains, county adult per lot, adult lot, adult block 44 lot. All of those are requested $25 change. The next series of expenses or fees are related to what we do at the graves themselves. So you have the disinterment, you have the per service fees, carry it all the way to the bottom, and you can see the changes that we're asking for there. Miscellaneous fees, the bronze memorial, that's to be placed at the mausoleums, also has been the same fee for a very long time, asking to adjust it by $25. $5 on the veterans memorial, $6 on the setting fee, and an increase of $10 to the concrete container box, and that is just basically a pass through cost that keeps going up on us. Final line on that one will be your mausoleum sales. And you see those numbers. You will also note that we changed the single crypt for level one, two, and three. It's coming up by 50. Same thing with four, five, six, and seven. The two tandem levels, same thing. And then $25 for those columbarium niches. Okay. We'll go now to the civic center. Revenue summary on page 42. We are beginning to see some more demand for events, so that revenue source is going to go up a bit. The remaining are pretty flat. We are going to use some excess reserves. Remember, the civic center carries its own reserve fund. That will be for cash capital for the next year. We are asking for one fee change, and that is equipment rentals specifically for the roll-offs that come in and get picked up at the end from an event, and that's a $75 change on that. Next page is your expense summary. Really not just a whole lot there. We do have, again, that transfer that we'll put in for cash funded capital, and civic center's getting a replacement vehicle this year. 3.7 million to 4.6 million. Next page is your capital. We have the parking lot repair, amphitheater erosion renovations. Council, remember that we were able to extend the lease terms. We don't own the land upon which the amphitheater sits. County does. Council approved a significant extension to that, so now we do want to get in and start doing the work on that. We have civic center maintenance fund, civic center equipment replacement and upgrade, all in about 1.25 million in civic center capital. Okay. Well, now it's time to go into the internal services funds.
Yeah, let's go ahead and take about a 10-minute break. Let's start back at 5:30. We are going to start back from break. We plan on going 30 more minutes, and then we will end this evening at 6 o'clock. So I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Atkinson. So I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Okay, let's go to now fleet services. Council, just a quick reminder, as I said earlier, the fleet's really, it's tough out there right now. We've got at least two years' worth of stuff that shouldn't be in the fleet, we have bought new ones, they're just not here yet, so it's, they're doing a phenomenal job. If we go back to those reserve sheets from part one, you'll see that that, that fund does not look good. It will change, I have no doubt. I also think that by the time all the supply lines break loose, I'm going to have more new vehicles than we can put into service all at once, we've already seen that with police cars. But with that said, let's go ahead and look at where we stand today. The maintenance and operations is really what's driving the increase, that's cost of supplies, that's equipment, that's service, and that's just fixing the same stuff over and over again, because it is so old and tired now. The debt service will go up, and that is the solid waste and Lubbock Fire Rescue Vehicles, that also washes back out, because if you go look at those departmental budgets, there's an equivalent transfer that comes out of them. So, bottom line, the budget for the current year, at the department level is 8.7 million, the new budget is 11.4, and again, that's your supplies and so forth. And then on the fund-level expenses, it's 9.6 versus 13. A big part of that, of course, is going to be that debt transfer driving up the fund-level expenses, but that's already accounted for in the prior budgets. Next one is health benefits. Slight decrease in compensation, that's just turnover, we do have an offset because of the colon and so forth. Biggest change here, this is where your health prem, health premiums are booked, so again, it's plus 10% to the city, it's plus 2 to the employee and to the retiree. So if you go to the bottom line on that, 39.6 in the current year, increasing to 42.1 on the, on the new year. Certainly agree with comments earlier, this is something, I don't think there's a magic bullet out there, but I do, I do think, we, we had really good luck about six years ago when the plan was restructured, and it helped a bunch. We were able to carry those savings right up until COVID started, and now those savings have been consumed, and that just what you're seeing with medical CPI is running away from us. So, there's your health plan. Okay, information technology, we do have a lot of new software that is coming online, the maintenance category accounts for that. The operational costs that you see, that is just the ongoing replacement of desktop and various laptop computers. Current year's budget's 11.7, proposed budget is 13.4. Questions there?
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you. Where it says compensation, there is minus 1.5. Talk to me about that, I know that one of the new slots, staff, should I say, is toward PD, is that, talk to, just talk to me about what's going on here with compensation, and why the difference is, if it is actually because of that.
It's, it's really not, the, the cost of that individual is carried in the PD budget as an expense, they're based at PD, there's actually an equivalent position that's been at fire for, for quite some time. The real change, if you look at it, makes that percent change look a little funny, because it's 2.3 million in the current year to 2.4 million in the new year. Yeah, it's, it's not actually a negative one and a half.
Okay, okay.
I think we have a sign reversed.
Okay, thank you.
They're hard key numbers, not calculated numbers, we'll, we'll clean those up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, may proceed.
Okay, the next, GIS and data services, the only change here is the cost of the compensation and benefit increases. Maybe my easiest one all night. Telecom, supply and maintenance category is going up, the real change there is the IVR, which is interactive voice recorder, and that is what is used by Lubbock Power and Light in the utility customer service center, so that cost offsets or transfers in from them to do that. Radio shop, comp and benefits here are flat, but that's because of staff turnover, some long-tenured employees, of course, you have the standard increases coming in there. We are, I mentioned that when you're in these log jams with getting vehicles, when they break loose, you get a whole lot of stuff all at once. With public safety vehicles, primarily police cars, I think we ended up with nearly 90 of them on the ground all at once, which is well beyond our ability to try to get outfitted. So we are trying to outsource the upfitting on those vehicles, and that carries a cost that wasn't in the prior budget. All in, your total change is from 3.4 to 3.1, that's at the bottom-line number, if you go up to the expenses by category, it's 1.1 to 1.5 million. Okay, the investment pool. Comp and benefits are slightly higher, standard comment there, all in, your change is from 269,000 to 286,000. To where they work and get all our wonderful interest income. Okay, the print shop, substantive change here is in your capital outlay line, we did not have equipment purchases in the current budget, we are buying an additional machine in the new budget, right at $13,000. So between that and the comp and benefits change, takes your total from 217 to 247. Warehouse. We are making an operational change, did LPN leave? Yeah, they did. We are making an operational change in the warehouse, they identified something, brought it to our attention, Blue, Marta, Paul, all worked on it. The warehouse is traditionally, it is set up as its own fund, and it typically charged a percentage of inventory to cover its cost, and then that went back into the departments. So now, this is going to be just a proportional charge based on usage back to the departments, making it a straight pass-through. There's actually a very small fund balance that's associated, that's been accumulated. The literal expenses are only changing from 452 to 472, so very slight change there. The real change is now, outside departments like Lubbock Power and Light will not be incentivized to basically have our warehouse for part of their work and their own warehouse for the other part of their work, because it's proportionally charged, if they're doing a high-capital project, it does not hurt them now to run it through the city warehouse, which streamlines employees and purchasing and everything else that goes with it. I think it's going to be good for us. Risk management, we are adding an insurance specialist position to this. Our insurance premiums are down, but that is because we did the 18 months, and not all, but the majority of our insurances are now going to flip back to the 12-month schedule going forward. So it looks like a substantial, like a $3 million decrease, that's the extra six months rolling off is what that is. Internal services, capital improvement program, starting on page 56. You've got the radio shops, vehicle replacement, you have water and wastewater vehicle replacement, stormwater replacement, general fund vehicle replacement, portion that is on the tax note, again, that being the fire vehicles, the large landfill vehicle, and the trash trucks. Civic center's vehicle, the regular general fund vehicle replacement, remember, that's in addition to what we did as the prepurchases, another 400,000 coming on to continue improving the radio systems. All in, internal services are programmed at 12.8 million in capital this year, the debt portion of that only being those vehicles on the tax notes. Special revenue. We'll start with the tax increment financing zones, first one of those up is the central business district TIF. At the top are your funding sources, remember that the funding sources, other than interest or prior-year bonds, is that incremental piece of the tax levy. If you're in a TIF, you do not pay more tax than you would if you were not in a TIF, a portion of the tax goes back to that zone, only to be used within that zone. So, current tax revenue for the central business district TIF is 1.4 million, proposed would be 1.5 million, so slightly more revenue coming into them, taking their total revenues from 1.5 million to 1.67. Go down to the expenditures, the current year, they're at 1.37, new year 1.05, leaving you with an overage, so revenue over expenditures of 619,000, that falls straight into their reserve. Well, doesn't go anywhere else, doesn't get used anywhere else, falls straight into the reserve. If you look at that, their reserves are at 2.259 million, 465,000 of that is the restricted portion, and that's debt service reserve for, for, actually for doing all the underground utilities and the common trenches, leaving available 1.8. That number's beginning to climb, and that is good, because that is the money that they have to put back to projects. Okay, the business park TIF, you see a slight increase in their tax revenue, about 69,000, also an increase in their earnings, I mean, their interest earnings. Move down to their expenditures, they're actually going down, those expenditures are going down, though, because there have been two years of cash-funded capital, this is related to finishing out the streets in the business park, they paid for the engineering, and that's worked its way out, there's very little ca, cash-funded capital, only 100,000. Short version, they're projected to end the new year about $921,000 in revenue over expense, falling into their reserve, taking their reserve to 2.7 million. This also is now climbing back out from the two years of spending the money on those roads, and putting them in a spot to continue to improve the business park. Capital improvement for the Lubbock Business Park TIF is the business park median irrigation, in the amount of 100,000, little trivial pursuit for today, those medians are owned by LITA, the city does not own them yet. Remember, LITA bought the entirety of the business park and developed it, they still maintain the ownership of the medians. Okay, North Overton TIF, also a slight increase in their projected tax earnings, hotel motel tax is also coming up, as is interest. Right now, total funding sources would be estimated at 6 million. Coming down to their expenditures, staff time's coming down a little bit, it's actually going to go back and match what it was in '22. Their debt service remains flat, they're cutting their transfer to the CIP, not in half, but close to it. So they will end the year with revenue over expenses in the amount of about 1.2 million, taking their reserves to 9 million, less the debt service, leaving available 7 and 1/2. The majority of the debt here is the conference center, that debt right now has four years left to pay out, four years. Its final payment is made in fiscal year '27. Good? Okay, North Overton TIF, they're transferred to capital, 750,000 for the TIF's public improvements, and adding a million into their street upgrade and replacement program, all cash. Ready for community development. Okay, there's a sequence of these that we'll look at, starting with community development block grant. You can see, starting in FY '20, carrying over to FY '24, this is an allocation from the federal government. We do presume that will be at least flat, maybe slightly up for the year, we budgeted it slat, at flat. Total funding sources are actually going to be 2.4 million from the current, to basically 2.4 million here, so not, not a real change there. The compensation is up, that's because it's shifting back over to fund this, back over to this department from what we have had in COVID grants. So the department-level expenditures will jump back up from 474 to a million dollars. You can see how that change started in FY '28, when that number went way down. Expenditures out of the fund level, 300,000 through public service, 1.6 million, the non-public service, I'm sorry, that's current year. Next year, the programmed expense is 1.4 million in the non-public service category, taking our expenditures to 2.395, matching our funding of 2.395. Next page starts your home grants, you see that entitlement funding across the top, again, very flat for the year, it's a 2% change, but that represents about $30,000. Expenditures, programmed largely to go into affordable housing development. Bottom half of the page is the emergency solutions grant, also basically level funding and level expenditures. Following page is the comprehensive energy assistance program, or CAP, 1/10th of 1% estimated change in that. You see the department expenses, this is our staff to operate it, and then right back down into the fund-level expenses, and the money comes in, and we put it right back to work for those intended purposes.
Mr. Atkinson, Mr., Ms. Patterson-Harris has a question.
When we were talking earlier, we were talking about the direction to send some of the ARPA funds that kind of made their way back to us, was there, has there been any consideration, or is this a potential conversation to begin looking at maybe funneling some, some funds to the CEAP, or is it, which one is it? The Community Energy Assistance Program, or whatever it is that we were doing during COVID, which one was it?
It was CAP.
CAP, okay, C A P, okay.
And CAP received a million and a half additional money, it's not the ARPA that's the 56 and 1/2 million, it was a separate ARPA program, but they, they did get that, which basically doubled their funding back in FY '22. So that's been there, the ARPA dollars that remain of the city's 56 and 1/2, I don't know that I would recommend putting money towards that, and we would first have to check to see if it's an eligible bucket anyway.
I was, I was just thinking, because some of the other stuff that we had, those funds were not fully utilized, and I know that they were through community development, so I just thought it was something that we might look at, and if it's not something that's allowed, I understand, but, you know, we definitely want to have funds go into places where they get spent, time is running out on us, and so, and if it's not a good, good idea, I understand, I just thought I'd ask a question.
Thank, thank you.
I'm just talking about what I'm talking about.
Good, good, good question. The way the budget's proposed, there's $6,313 left in ARPA, but again, we talked about the two categories that I think come up for review in January. We will look and see if it's eligible, I think that's the threshold question. This, one thing this council has done- This, one thing this council has done, and I very much appreciate it, is we have put those ARPA dollars towards improvements, rather than towards salaries or services, because if you do that, it always runs out. So, we're fully committed right now. We may not be as of January. All right. This is your catch-all, kind of your other funding sources, and then the total at the bottom, so you take the community development funding sources all in. Current year, it's about 6.7 million. Proposed year would be 6.2. Those changes are those small, you know, 1 and 2% decreases per fund. Okay, where the economic development, are they on the way? We don't know. Oh, this is our internal fund, I'm sorry. Okay.
Mr. Atkinson, one second. Ms. Martinez-Garcia has a question.
I know they're going to get a copy of that, but is there a way you can just go back to the community development funds, please?
Sure.
Is this the first page?
Yes, CDBG is the first one.
Under the... Hold on, I'm sorry. Let me just reconnect here. Well, I'll just, I want a copy of this, and I know they're working on getting me a copy, so I'll review it once. I don't think it's in here. Yeah, I don't have it. Steve was hogging it over here, so.
All right, I guess, seeing that we don't have anyone from LITA here, and we're... You want to go ahead and finish that one, Jared? Is that internal?
Yeah, this particular one, this is our internal fund. I was jumping ahead, wishful thinking.
Let's go ahead and go through economic development there.
Okay, this is, again, this is your internal economic development fund, and then there are transfers and so forth, you know, that come out of it. This is where the dollars come in, where we accumulate them, and then work to move them where they need to go. You do see a slight increase in the property tax revenue. That's the 2.75% in the appraisal growth, taking us down to our total revenue sources of 4.589 for the new year versus 4.4 in the current year. Going down to your expenditures, the compensation, this is the fund that pays for a portion of our business development staff, for their assistant that works through the various TIFs and the PIDs and those types of items. So compensation, benefits, supplies, training, that's where all that works out. You see the last two lines before the total are where the transfers start. So the first is the transfer to transit, the 400,000. We covered that, goes into the city bus budget, and that's 400,000 less that we're taking out of the general fund. The Market Lubbock transfer, current year's 3.85 million, new year's 3.9 million, so the increase is less than 4% coming across there. Counsel, we are looking at setting these transfers up for the next year as a dollars year over year, plus an agreed percentage, basically. Historically, that's been attached to a tax rate, which doesn't really exist, it's just an internal calculation. I think this is probably a better way going forward, but certainly would take your comments and feedback on it.
Oh, Ms. Joy.
Yeah, I think this, even though it's internal fund, it is related to what comes next with LITA. So, I kind of like for us to go over this when they are present.
Okay. And it's been shared with them as well, so. Okay, LITA will be available tomorrow at 2:00. But I was just told. So we might be able to do all or most other than that tonight.
All right, so that would be a good place, well...
We've got Gateway.
Let's go ahead and do the Gateway, and that gives us a clean break to come back into hot tomorrow.
You bet. Okay, let's talk about Gateway, page 72. The top, of course, is your revenues. You do see interest increasing. The transfer from general fund, reminder, this is all funded out of franchise fees, according to the original resolution and ordinances. Total funding in the current year is 9.9. New funding next year will be 8.6. That is all because of the reduction in the revenue to franchise fees that we talked about when we kicked off today. Gateway was originally set up entirely as a debt service fund. So from its creation, its inception, that's what it was intended to do. Counsel did make a change for us, far as eligible uses, to allow it to be used both still as a debt service fund for new things, we're going to actually talk about both, and to deploy capital and use it, and we're proposing to do that inside the loop with street maintenance and with the ADA ramps. So, on expenditures, debt service basically flat. Cash-funded capital, you see us putting up the 750,000. So 500 for inside-the-loop street maintenance, 250,000 for inside-the-loop ADA ramps. For the year, that is going to put the fund just a little bit under, unbalanced, so to speak. So now you go down and you look at your fund balance lines. 8.4 million is your fund balance, 6.2 million is the required reserve, still leaving you with the 2.278. That's how we're able to afford to do the cash project and the debt project that'll come next. Next year, that amount of capitals, cash capital's not going to be there. Now, if there is a change, if fuel rates go up, I mean, things in the franchise fee world can change. They moved against us this year, they'll eventually move back for us in the future. We've just held that flat projection. You've got the dollars now, you're not going to have them next year. So, turn the page with me. Let's talk about what we're going to propose in the Gateway capital. You see on here, Upland, 66th to 82nd. It has 6.3 million in funding to date, 10.6 million programmed in the new year. So this is a project through the MPO, so it will be bid by TextDOT. It does have MPO funding. The cost of this project has risen now to an estimated $17 million. It is going to be very expensive. It has to get underneath the Marsha Sharp, and it has significant drainage challenges. It also took nearly three years to get all the right-of-way acquired, because there was no one big piece, it was all little pieces. Here's how we propose and suggest that we fund this project.
Jared, just briefly, just for record purposes, what was the original estimated cost?
I believe it was about 9 million.
Thank you.
So working against a $17 million estimate and an October bid letting by TextDOT, here's our recommendation. This project crosses two of your impact fee zones, Area A, Area F. Those have, and these are actually a month-old numbers, so they'll go up slightly. Area A has 1.27 million available. Area F has 1.6 million available. We've yet to use impact fee monies, but this is the definition of a project that is eligible for impact fee dollars. I mentioned this project's got a lot of drainage challenges on it. Per the engineers, about $1.7 million of this cost is 100% assignable to drainage. Your stormwater fund has that cash to do that. That's not debt funded out of stormwater, so those are all cash. We're balancing it by suggesting a $6 million tax note paid out of Gateway. Again, Gateway's a debt service fund. Now, we think the number is not 6. We think it's somewhere between 4.1 and 4.8. Still a lot of money, but not 6. So counsel, we're proposing to put in the budget the $6 million tax note funded out of Gateway, knowing that you will not issue this until after TextDOT lets the bids, and we have the exact number. I do not want to get caught the way this project is running. I don't want to get caught and have to come back and amend budgets to try to get it funded. If this works, project bids in October, TextDOT, what's called the Texas Transportation Commission, the board that oversees TextDOT, could likely award the project in December, and ideally, we could see construction very late January, early February, as the contractor moves on site for that. That's a big, confusing bucket to put together to fund a street project, so I'll take any questions that you may have.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Knew this was coming. Because if this, the paying of that note comes, we're still, we're looking at Gateway funds.
We are.
What does that do for the potential or the ability to continue to do some things, or that money to accrue in order to do some other things with Gateway funds that we've talked about and made it for?
Well, I mean, it books in as a debt service expense in the Gateway in the future. The fund, even with this, in our model projections out by '28, can handle another large project. If that project doesn't come, that's that much more cash that's available to deploy. So I think for this year, what we're proposing is a do both. We just can't do both every year in Gateway.
I just, I just don't want us to forget what we told citizens when we made the shift.
Agree. If you would turn back one page in your books and on the slides for me, let me point out a couple of things.
Yeah.
See the line that says cash-funded capital projects?
Hold on, let me get my glasses. You know, I got three lines over here. Okay, I see it.
So you see the 750 this year.
750, I got it right there, mhm.
We have 500 cash next year.
Next year, and 250 the following.
Mhm, coming back up to 500. That's presuming, though, that you also have the additional issuance that would come out in '27. If you don't, that's that much more cash, and it's actually a million more in the cash.
Yeah. And I get it, it's important that it gets done, but, you know, I don't want us to be talking out the side of our neck when we've been telling citizens we're going to do everything that we can to make sure some places inside the loop of the city get taken care of. That's my concern. So if you're going to work hard and make sure that while you're looking hard to make this come to fruition, that as we continue, that we also bear in mind that there are things that must be done within the loop of this city. Otherwise, we're going to have some folks mighty darn mad, and I ain't getting whooped for somebody else.
Yes, I agree, and I hope folks see that the council followed through. When you changed the resolution, you said when the cash would allow us to do cash, we would deploy it inside the loop, and we're doing it. And we're programmed to continue to do it.
Yes, sir.
So.
All righty. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other questions through Gateway? All right, then at this time, we will adjourn. We will begin promptly back at 2 o'clock tomorrow.